I saw you drive by my house the other day.
Tuesday, April 5th.
I saw Riverside 10.
This is a special meeting of the Riverside Board of Education, 7:00 PM. Margie, would you take the call roll please?
Absolutely.
Mr. Brackway? Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Ms. Mangia?
Here.
Mrs. Morello?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
Here.
Is there any public comment? Seeing there's no public comment, the only item of business on the agenda is the resolution for the Honorable Dismissal of three employees. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for honorable dismissals as presented?
It's a move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Margie, could you call the roll please?
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So, at this point, we will go into the committee of the whole meeting and we'll turn the meeting over to Sherri.
Okay, tonight we have some Howser highlights. Ms. May is here, and I don't know if Merrill, if you have anything else to say in addition?
I'm just gonna introduce it. So, Ms. May from Howser Junior High, the principal, is here, and she's gonna present some highlights, and we're trying to give our principals a chance to highlight, but this is also timely with respect to the education committee because in her highlights, you're gonna hear some of the work we've been doing to beef up the encore offerings within Howser's program, and she's gonna talk a little bit about that tonight, as well as some special programming that deals with the social-emotional learning standards. So, April.
Okay. And I have some very special guests that are gonna help me out too when it gets to their parts because they're really the people doing all the hard work. All right. So, first, the encore offerings. Where should I be?
Maybe you can take the mic down if you want. You can pull it out.
Do I need to use the mic?
It helps.
It's just for the audio.
For the audience on the tape.
Yeah.
Forget about the audience.
The one that's behind the camera.
I'm sorry. That was really loud.
You can't get it out. There you go.
So, for the encore offerings, what students have currently, and it's very subtle change for next year, but students have what we call core and encore. So, core is your math block, your ELA block, your science and your social studies. So, you think about, you know, those core subjects that we all had as well. The encore side of the school is your arts and your enhancements, those enrichments that you want students to also be well-rounded. And middle school is about being a well-rounded person and developing all of the areas. So, for middle schoolers, they have three periods a day that they go to encore. And very similar to what we have this year, and I'll highlight maybe the changes as we go through, every child takes PE, so that is one of their periods, and it's all year long. This year, health came out of PE, and they did it in a chunk, a block, kinda to get ourselves caught up. Our proposal for next year is that students will do health in two-week spans throughout the school year. So, they'll do two weeks, and then they're back into PE while another teacher will take their classes for PE for two weeks, or for health for two weeks. And so, PE is one of those periods. Health comes out of the PE class, and our PE classes are looking at the enhanced PE standard. So, really looking at learning, physical fitness and health, and making that lifetime goals, something that, you know, we all should be doing even as adults. In sixth grade, students have the option, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they also have the option for one of those periods to be band or orchestra. That was instituted for the first time, I guess this is the first time this year, that those have been in the school day. Those are also year-long, but it is an optional choice. So, that's something that a child and their parent will make the decision, do I wanna pursue band or orchestra? They can't do both, but they have to do one or the other. In sixth grade, the only optional thing is band or orchestra. Seventh and eighth graders also have the choice of taking a full-year foreign language. So, we offer Spanish and French. If I am a seventh or an eighth grader, and I want to take a full-year foreign language, and I'm also in band or orchestra, and then I also have PE, those are my three. Okay? If I am in band or orchestra, but I'm not taking a foreign language, then I have a choice of other encore classes. And that's where we're gonna have some additional offerings next year to kind of pull in mainly the STEM/STEAM type of classes. So, the science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So, utilizing all of those subject areas and helping kids really be career-ready for when they leave college. It's doing that designing and creating using science and math and technology and art and pulling that all together. Our hope with that is through our art classes that are offered at all three grade levels, our art teacher, Mr. Singh, will be working at incorporating a STEM/STEAM project at each year. So, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, when they take art, we'll be doing a STEAM project. And we've been working, Mr. Schmidt will be heading that along with Merrill, and they've been working with Triton College and really have some really exciting things on the horizon where they will hopefully be able to use a laser or 3D printer to actually have a product at the end that they have designed. So, that's one of our additional things. So, we're still having art, but we're putting a little bit more of that STEAM-type project in the art. And then we are adding the STEM class, which this year we had computer programming. There will be STEM and computer programming also offered at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we can attack the Howser way. Right there. So, at each grade level, if I'm not in band or orchestra, and I'm not taking a full-year language, then I will end up receiving all six of the offerings of encore. I know it's a little confusing, and when you're not used to doing scheduling, you know, it may seem a little confusing. So, at sixth grade, they have global cultures, art, communications. So, if you wanna think about it, that could be three rotations, so one for each trimester for a period. And then sixth graders also have the STEAM, computer programming, music, and speech and drama. Music is another change. In the past, here, or at least this year, students who weren't in band or orchestra were forced to take a full-year of music. Usually, if a child likes music, they're probably gonna be in band or orchestra. So, doing a full year of music, we just figured if we could do music for a trimester, then we could open up more offerings for students so that they would have other opportunities to learn other things. So, the music from this year, which has been a full year, for next year, we're hoping to do just a trimester. So, every child will get a trimester of music, but then they're also gonna be able to get into the STEAM classes, the computer programming classes, speech and drama, communications. They're gonna be able to get all of those. Same thing will happen at seventh and eighth grade. Global cultures goes away and turns into a media communications-type thing or a broadcast journalism. So, still working with ELA standards, really, speaking and listening and reading and researching and doing with different media. The STEAM and computer programming classes will be offered at all three grade levels, and the music kind of goes into more of a keyboarding, guitar, a rhythm-type drumming, you know, a little more advanced as they move up in seventh and eighth grade. So, that a child, if a child isn't in band or orchestra and does not take a foreign language, when they're taking their encore classes through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they're not repeating any of the curriculum. They may have art all three years, but they're gonna be doing different projects. So, that's kind of a encore, quick refresher.
Two things that I'm just gonna chime in on. One is you'll see a full STEAM/STEM proposal for what that will look like at the May COW meeting. We need a whole meeting. Jason Schmidt and I will be here to talk about that. The second thing I wanted to let you know is that since band and orchestra, this was the first year that it was full-year in the school day, we're not gonna be changing that for next year, but we are gonna be surveying parents at the end of this year and students to see how they feel about that model. And so, then after the second year, we'll have the student-parent feedback, and we can evaluate whether or not that's something we wanna maintain because it does impact the ability to take more courses throughout the encore offerings. So, we're gonna be getting some feedback on that and seeing how people have responded to that.
Do you know offhand, like, what percentage of kids take both, of the seventh and eighth graders, take both a foreign language and either band or orchestra?
I don't know the percentage, but it is very common that a child that's in band or orchestra also takes a foreign language.
So, none of those kids would be able to take any of these electives?
Correct. Right.
How much of the student body, what is it, seventh and eighth grade, take a foreign language?
This year, we have, just because I've been working on scheduling, we have four sections of French. We have three second sections of French this year, so we have two sections at seventh grade, one at eighth grade. And for Spanish, we have three, five, 10 sections of Spanish. So, Spanish is very popular, but it's a very good chunk of students.
Would you say, I mean, 50, 60, 70 percent?
I'd say probably 65 to 70 percent with those sections.
65 to 70. And then you mentioned the first of the seventh and eighth graders.
Yeah, seventh and eighth, of the seventh and eighth graders. Sixth graders don't have foreign language.
Right.
And then for the sections, three sections of French, so two were in the seventh grade and one section was in the eighth. Is the eighth grade like an advanced, in other words, is it like entry level?
So, the foreign language, if I can quickly explain, the foreign language basically is a freshman-year foreign language-level class. So, they take the first half, their seventh-grade year, the second half, their eighth-grade year, and they actually then test into, when they go to RB. Many of them test into Level 2 Spanish, Level 2 French. Some even test into Level 2 Honors Spanish or Honors French. So, they're basically taking a freshman-level course over the period of two years. They do not get high school credit for it. Really, what it does is it sets a student up, if they're wanting to take a fifth-year foreign language, that they can get that in their senior year of high school.
And then you said they do kind of half of a freshman in the seventh and the other half in eighth. Does it mean three times a week or?
It's every day.
Every day, all year? They just take it maybe at a slower pace?
It's stretched out over two years instead of one.
So, in this year's freshman class, we had 75 students qualify for Honor Spanish 2 at RB. So, they passed out of the first level. And they're doing really well. They have mostly As and Bs.
Now, again, just a question here. I guess we're talking about French, but what is the reason there aren't the same two sections of French in eighth grade, but there are two in seventh?
Well, it's based on student preference. So, the students will be here in the next several weeks, will be getting preference sheets that will be going home to parents, and it will have on there an explanation of each class, encore class, what it is. For the foreign language, it will explain to students that it is a work-intensive class. There's homework, there's tests. It takes some extra effort. You're making a year-long commitment when you take band or orchestra or a foreign language, so you can't sign up for it and then decide, I don't wanna take this anymore, because our staffing and everything is done based on those preferences. So, from year to year, preferences are different.
Also, the class size.
Eighth grade is a smaller class right now.
It's much smaller.
Yeah, so, anyway, there was probably only one section of.
There were just that number of students who signed up for it in seventh grade, yes.
Okay, so that's just.
So, we're anticipating two sections of French at eighth grade next year because we have two at seventh grade, and then we won't know what we'll have at seventh grade for about a month.
There's about 80 more students in the seventh grade than there are in the eighth grade as a class size, so.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
One quick question. So, sixth grade, I know currently, and I only know it because I have a sixth grader, it's the only reason, they do global cultures, art, communications, and they switch trimester. So, would that be the same for one encore, like, for one period? Would they still do those three? So, if a child does band, and then their other encore is the global cultures, art, communication, they wouldn't have access to the others?
It will depend on how we put the schedule together because we're gonna have to work it out with staff. But there will be six offerings at some point so that the child who's not in band or orchestra doesn't repeat.
Right, right, right. That makes, so basically.
So, there's three, it will just depend on their classes and where they follow the schedule.
So, basically, if you are a student who takes band or orchestra, you're kind of, you have to choose these, you know, more STEM/STEAM-related classes or band or orchestra in sixth grade. Right?
You could potentially have band or orchestra and STEAM.
Right.
And PE.
Because what we will do is we'll get preferences from students?
Oh, so instead of doing the art, communications, global cultures, you might have that.
I getcha. Okay, that's nice, that's nice to hear because.
Seven to eighth isn't.
That is really nice to hear because I think for a lot of the band, orchestra students, they're kind, they kind of feel like they wouldn't be.
They're stocked.
And not that I don't think, I thought the global cultures, art, and communications have been great classes as well, I just.
There's more of a choice for the rotation.
Okay, that's good to hear.
It's good.
I mean, and of course, everybody's not gonna get their preference because, you know.
Right, we can't guarantee, but we'll work very hard.
Exactly, but you can try. That's great to hear.
Over the course of the three trimesters, and that's why we're not doing music year-long, it will give us more opportunity for a kid to get that preference before that.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. Thank you.
Any questions on encore?
I think it's exciting.
Yeah. Just wait until you hear.
Oh, I'll wait until May.
Wait until May, it just happens. We have to keep these up to look forward to.
Yeah, I won't tell.
Yes, so, that was just a little trailer for STEAM that will be coming in May. The next thing we kind of just wanted to share with you, the Howser Way is our PBSS system that was actually created last year by the teachers and administration together, district-wide, working on the PBSS system. It was created last year, the Howser Way, act respectfully, be responsible, and choose to be positive. So, they kind of got that all set with this year's really goal is to implement that and make sure that students were aware of that and make sure that we implemented the consequence side, which is hopefully a very tiny portion, and the reward side, or the data tracking of, you know, how kids actually are following this. So, we started out the year, and our phrase that we taught students from the beginning is attack today, and they respond the Howser Way. So, that's kind of been our motto for the year. Paw points has been what came out of teacher, you know, kind of working together this fall on making sure that we were doing positive recognition. So, the paw points are given out to students. It's an opportunity for us to recognize kids for doing what they're expected to be doing. Instead of focusing on negative behaviors, focusing on the positive. It gives an opportunity for a teacher, an administrator, a secretary, to interact with students when they are, when they do see something that they're doing that's positive and have that interaction with them, to have a conversation with them, give them, it's a piece of paper, it's brightly colored, and it basically has their name on it, and it's a thank you for doing the right thing, either being respectful, being responsible, or positive about things. Along with that, we've done different monthly rewards for students. So, when they earn these paw points, they had the opportunity to put them into different buckets. Some of the individual awards that we would draw each month would be first in line in the lunch line for a week. Get to sit in the teacher's chair. We've had an Aunt Diana's gift certificate for $5 each month. We had a Howser t-shirt. One of the big ones that kids have been excited to win is to create the music playlist for our passing period. So, those are some of the individual rewards that kids have gotten as a drawing from putting their paw points in. We did find that kids, some kids were really good about turning them in, and others, it was almost like they didn't really care about turning them in. It was, I have 25 of them here collected in my pencil pouch. So, we've kind of been trying to push them to turn these in. We use it as a data tracking, so making sure the teachers have a database that shows each child and how many paw points they've received, and so that we can make sure that we are also identifying what kids have not yet been recognized so that we can really focus and find them doing something good and help them to feel positive about things. Teachers also have the options of using the paw points for classroom rewards, grade levels, the teachers at each grade level can do that, and then we have offered whole-school rewards. Our first one was looking at tardies, so trying to get kids to school on time and to reduce those numbers of tardies, especially with the newer schedules. So, we did that one first this year because that was kind of, it's hard to get up earlier now. The next couple that we did, we just looked at numbers of paw points being turned in. And so, kids, they earned a movie of popcorn at the end of one of the marking periods. And we are now working on May Madness, where they would have an opportunity to do some kind of fun activities at the end of a day coming up in May. Hopefully, they're going to earn that reward. Along with that, we also have our social-emotional learning standards that have been instituted this year through our advisory class. Our advisory class isn't quite long enough to do a whole lesson, so on Fridays, we have altered schedule, and they have an extended advisory where they're going through their SEL lessons. I have the standards there, the goals that we're looking to address. Some of the sample lessons are things that teachers have done. Grade levels actually do this, they do the planning together. They do goal-setting with students, and they have the students set goals, and then they go back and have the students think about, have they reached those goals? In January, we did a boot camp kind of thing to go back and refresh students on what they were supposed to be doing, looking at responsibility, talking about checklist, talking about, how do I stay organized? How do I make sure that I'm writing my assignments down? So, it's a lot of different things like that, as well as team-building, getting along with others, problem-solving, collaborating. So, they do different activities on those extended Friday advisories so that we can make sure that we're covering our SEL standards. Anything there, please? Question?
Yeah, I have a question about the paw points. I guess it comes back to this question, we were talking a little bit earlier before the meeting with you, of the difference between sort of intrinsic and extrinsic rewards. So, these are kind of, to me, it looks like the paw points, you're giving extrinsic rewards for good behavior, basically. But to me, it seems like at the age these kids are at in middle school, you know, they're 12, 13, 14 years old, that they should be getting to the point where the intrinsic motivation is dominant motivation. And it seems, I wonder if we're sending, in some ways, the question I have is, are we sending the wrong message, maybe, by giving these rewards and saying, we're kind of paying you to behave this way? But really, the message should be, we expect you to behave this way. And in fact, this is gonna be, there'll be many, many good things to come out of this in your life, the ability to have delayed gratification, the ability to, you know, have to self-discipline, the ability to get along with others. These are all things that you should want for their own sake, not because we're giving rewards. So, I guess, I guess I have some questions about the program in general. I mean, that's just giving rewards like that for behavior that I think is, should be expected at that age.
That's a great point. Middle school is really a transitional time for students when they are moving from things that are extrinsic, including rewards, to intrinsic, moving from very concrete learning to abstract learning. You know, I understand, it's a great point. I would say that the kids here, for the most part, the kids are not focused on the rewards. Like I said, some of them aren't even turning them in. We're wanting them turned in for data tracking so that we can make sure that we're reaching out and finding those kids. We don't want any kids to fall between the cracks. So, we wanna make sure, you know, is there a child that isn't getting that positive recognition and needs to get that? I can't measure intrinsic motivation, but I feel like, or at least I hope, that that conversation, when a child is receiving the paw point, begins for them to get that intrinsic feeling that, wow, you know, Mrs. May really, she noticed that, you know, I did the right thing, that, you know, I, we've had, you know, kids, I found this $20 bill in the hallway. Oh, my gosh, that is awesome, thank you so much. You know, someone's gonna really miss that. You know, let me give you a paw point, that was so responsible of you. You know, just having that quick little conversation hopefully will be the beginning of that intrinsic motivation. Many of our students, luckily for us, are already intrinsically motivated, thanks to good families, for grades and good behavior. But there are also students who still need that extrinsic reward or that recognition or, you know, it may be that they're not getting recognition, they don't notice its recognition. And it's also a way to recognize kids who do do the right thing. I think a lot of times, or I can think in my own schooling, you know, it wasn't the person sitting there doing everything the right way and following the rules that got any type of notice, you know, it was, you know, the person that wasn't following the rules. So, it's kind of that. You know, and we try not to do too much on the reward end, but at the same time, we want them, for those kids that really need something to work for.
I'll take a point. I mean, I just, I just, I guess I have questions about, like, the example you gave, if someone turns in some money they found, and then to give them a paw point, in a way, almost like, I find it almost, it's like a payment for doing something that they should feel good about in itself, you know what I'm saying? And they maybe do feel good about doing the right thing. So, I just, I guess I just have some problems about that, but it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I think we're kind of looking at it as like, it's like giving a thank you note. It's like, hey, thank you, thank you for doing the right thing.
Maybe you could train me in the paw point program so I can use it in my religious education. It sounds like.
Especially if you have any of our kids here, they know all of it.
Yeah, those are kids.
Well, I should say that I have two or not, but mainly, they are Howser kids, and yes, I could, would like to understand your program.
Yeah, part of it is that, from that positive behavioral intervention system philosophy of more like the thank you note, and that's why the individual rewards are more chance, they're not automatic. It's more that piece of paper, that's the recognition of, you know, a positive affirmation versus a reward per se. So, the individual buckets that she was talking about, you're not guaranteed that, you know, that's a pretty slim chance, slim to not, you know, based on the amount of reward. But it's more that interaction with the, positive interaction with the adult is what that system's trying to foster.
Which is a good thing itself. I like the positive side of it. I don't, I'm not sure I like the rewards.
I hear what you're saying about the.
They can't create paper.
So, my question is, so as this moves on through the year and progresses, I'm assuming probably different reasons for paw points as you move on. I would, you know what I mean? Like, is there a progression? Or, like, my concern is, I'm all for the positive behavior, the PBSS. I'm just, my question is, does it lend towards kids playing the game a little bit?
Trying to get the paw.
You know, so, I'm just curious, if in your, if in your experience, does it lend towards them playing the game? Like, the kid, you know, like, I know I'm gonna get, if I sit here and do my work, I'm gonna get a paw point, and then all of a sudden, a kid has 25 paw points. Is there a progression of, like, expectation? Like, if you're a kid who always sits there and does your work, you might get it once, but you shouldn't be getting a paw point. So, I would, I would love to hear, like, the actual.
Laura, do you wanna?
I'd be happy to chime in. I teach eighth grade, and so I will say, there's not only a progression from the beginning of year to the end of year, there's definitely a progression from sixth grade to eighth grade. You're not gonna see the eighth grade teachers giving out paw points for the same reason that the sixth grade. The sixth grade are just happy that their locker's not jammed, or like, way to go, right? The expectation is you can get in and out of your locker. But in my classroom, it's more so like at the beginning of the year, when that first student walks in and turns in their homework where I told them to, I'll be like, thank you so much for turning in your homework. And all of a sudden, 24 other kids are like, oh, and they're searching for their homework, and they're getting them in. And the one who got it is really just like, and I did it first. You know, it's more of a, and so then, you know, I probably won't give out another paw point for the rest of the year for homework, but it could be for the person who comes in and starts doing their bell ringer, and I'll be like, and a paw point for this guy who said, right down to do the bell ringer. And within two seconds, they're all stopped now when they're doing the bell ringer. And it's not so much like, oh, hey, I might win $5 from Aunt Diana's. It's more, it's almost even just a gentle reminder that, but instead of pointing out the person. It's more, it's almost even just a gentle reminder that, um, but instead of pointing out the person who's like, why is your homework not out yet? It's more so, look who's already got their homework in. And that's the difference in the philosophy, I think. And the kids, in my opinion, respond much more positively to pointing out the one in the room that's doing it right than pointing out the one in the room who's doing it wrong. Because you don't ever want to be the guy that's doing it wrong, but quite frankly, after a while, it can be kind of funny. You'd be like, oh, yeah, that was me. But when you point out the one who does it positive, they almost respond um, even more so to be the one that got recognized for, you know, doing what you're supposed to do. And not so much because, you know, they're hoping, you know, to be the DJ for the week or anything, especially in the eighth grade, they just assume not. She talks about the kids that are turning it in, she's talking about the eighth graders. But for that moment, when they can go, ah, I got it in first, right? The next day, I will actually have a small group of kids that run to the homework bin to see if they can get it in first. So for us, it's just that, that reminder of, these are the expectations, thanks for doing them. Keep in mind, next year, nobody's handing you a slip, but you need to get this into your habit, you need to get this into your repertoire, and that's what we're hoping you to do.
After they get a certain amount of paw points, they can turn it in for, for like Aunt, was that what you said, Aunt Diana?
Well, any paw point can be turned in, but then it just goes into a raffle. So you're not getting something for every ticket. It's a random drawing then, that one child out of the almost six hundred kids gets an Aunt Diana's gift certificate.
Okay.
You know, at the end of the month.
I'm, I'm curious, um, how, have you surveyed the staff about just the tracking and how that's working? And has that been, does it take a lot of time? I'm just curious, just having been in the classroom, like, is it a, is it a quick thing? Is it something that's, you know?
It, it's simple things like what Laura just mentioned, um, in the beginning, and that's part of the transition, because we were trying to introduce paw points and get the buy-in for both the students and the teachers. A lot of it, especially at the beginning of the year, was for very basic things, that no, we are not going to continue to, you know, recognize everybody for doing what they're supposed to be doing. But in order to get the kids excited about it and to help get the teachers into a habit of it. Um, a lot of them just keep them in their little, like, there's a plastic pouch that they have their ID in, and they just keep a few in there. Um, others, what do you guys do?
Well, I think to answer, I think what you're asking.
I'm more interested in the tracking, yeah.
Manageability.
Oh, the office does the tracking.
And we're very fortunate that the office, you know, teachers are always wishing they had a secretary to help with data.
That's what I was thinking about, I thought, oh, that would take me a while.
Senator Smith has done some great data collection this year with other areas, and then we've got some secretaries and admin helped her.
Yeah, I just had a question, because I thought, oh, how would that?
The manageability of it, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I went to ask about, um, for the other side of it, for the SEL, um, are, what, am I right that you would be teaching executive functioning skills and having children kind of filling out their own schedules and that kind of time management, does that go along with that SEL, or is that a different?
Sixth grade, definitely.
Yeah, I would say that's always fit into our advisory, and some years, we have more or less time to do it. The advisory's so short this year, so that we do a little less of it. But in sixth grade, we do a lot of handholding with filling out assignment notebooks, studying the calendar, time management. So, yes, and depending on how the advisory is structured, there's definitely.
So on Fridays, they do a little more SEL and that, and then they change it.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Check the day again.
Yeah, we got one more.
I should have made this a little bit longer. All right, so Cougar Buddies, Ms. Jen Kovar, going to pass the mic, is one of our wonderful sponsors who have taken this over, I'm gonna let her share a little bit about that great program.
Thank you. Hello, everybody, I'm Jen Kovar, I am fortunate enough to teach sixth grade language arts here at Hauser. Um, and my co-sponsor is Caitlin Stabe, and she's a, a special ed teacher, um, mostly teaching eighth grade. Um, and so thanks to Pam, we are really excited to be uh, getting Cougar Buddies off the ground this year. I think you have a little bit of background, and so I'm here to give you more of the, the nitty-gritty of what we've been doing and a picture of what it looks like now that it's up and running. Um, as you know, it's modeled after Best Buddies, and that is very popular at RB and many other middle schools and high schools in the area. And, but put simply, without even thinking about the buddies, we've been emphasizing an opportunity for kids of all shapes and sizes to come together in a social environment. So when I talk to the kids about it, in a lot of ways, you know, they ask, what are, what's it about, what are we gonna do? It's a social club, it's a place to come together, we do a range of activities. Um, but then, we, we have talked from the beginning about the underlying mission, there's a number of, of underlying missions. Um, one is to push back against the segregation that students with disabilities of various sorts have always faced. And anyone in society that has a disability has faced that segregation from the general population. And so, we have been overt, in a, in a subtle way, overt but subtly, talking to the, the Hauser population about that mission, that we um, often aren't comfortable with our peers that have some sort of disability, whether it's cognitive or physical. And so this is a chance to get to know someone, um, reach out to them, and then in turn, um, your, your regular students are, are gaining a lot, so it, it goes both ways. That obviously, we want to help students who might struggle with making friends for various reasons. We're helping them to make a bridge, but then on the flip side, you'll hear again and again that students who um, are, I don't always have the right words for it, but your, your average typical student, your typical peer, um, ends up gaining just as much, if not more, from that, that new friendship and that understanding of students with various disabilities. So with that said, we bring the kids together for lots of different activities. One week, we went to a Hauser basketball game, and we made signs, and we were just there to cheer the team on. It's just a, a social outing. Um, another week, we'll be making some sort of arts, arts or craft activity. One of the moms is um, being extra helpful and offering to bring in some supplies, which is so appreciative. Uh, we are so appreciative. Um, we're also doing, so we have those types of activities, but we're also taking on a number of community service um, activities. We are helping with the canned food drive, um, starting tomorrow morning. We've got a group of kids signed up to come in and help collect the cans and just be part of that larger mission. So we have two or three community service type activities going on as well. And as this is our first year, it's all new, and we're keeping it simple and starting small, and there's a, a ton of potential. Um, we've met with folks at RB and also at Brooks Middle School in Oak Park to get lots of inspiration and ideas for the, the possibilities of this club. So, it's exciting, it's in its early stages, and really, it's just, it's fun, it's a, it's a cool club.
We had a math meeting over here one day when they were in here, and it was like, so much fun to hear all the kids, they were so excited, and all the elementary teachers were saying, what's going on in there? They'll explain it all, but it was pretty neat to hear.
Well, thank you for everything that you're doing, and also thank you to Pam for tailoring it for us.
Just one thing, can you share a little bit about the, um, end, I spread the word to end the word?
Ah!
And about how it's, what students?
Sure, so, one of the other initiatives we're moving forward on right now, there's a national campaign called Spread the Word to End the Word, and it's focused around eradicating the word retard in schools. And um, you, you, once you hear it once, you'll notice it out in the community. Um, and so the students are helping to put together this campaign that we're gonna, we're going to put into place at Hauser the last week of April. Will be, uh, we'll have these huge banners in the cafeteria, and we'll be asking students to take a pledge. The, the heart of it is this taking a pledge to not use the R-word. We'll be writing, um, the kids, the kids are writing announcements to be read over the loudspeaker. We'll be going to advisories to make announcements, posters, um, and it's, it's student, the idea is that it's student-driven. This year, we don't have an official executive committee like you would with a student council. Um, but next year, we'll tap some of our leaders and have them drive the activities even more.
Do that hit what you were looking for? You had shared with me too, that it was a student who suggested.
Yeah, so I, I want to say that we had the idea from RB, because it's this national campaign, but then once we, we do a lot of brainstorming with the kids, and so once we started, we must have hit on a video or something about this activity, and then the, the kids, yeah, we want to do this at Hauser, and the, it snowballed from there. And we do really want them to take ownership of it. I had a student write the email that I then sent to April and Jason to explain what it was all about and, and help get everybody on board. And one other really sweet little anecdote, um, this is one small example of many types of behaviors, but um, students of all sorts come to Cougar Buddies, not only disabled students, but we've encouraged a lot of socially awkward students, students that have trouble making friends to begin with. Um, and one day, a boy came for the first time, and it's also neat that it's a really open club. You can come this week and not show up next week, you can join months later. So one little boy came for the first time and sat by himself, and this was what you'd call a typically abled peer. And um, I, I left him alone, I thought later, we'll regroup him, you know, we're supposed to be working in groups, you're supposed to be interacting with your peers. Well, lo and behold, one of our cognitively, cognitively disabled students noticed and took it upon himself to move over and sat with the, the loner boy without anybody making that suggestion. So, which is really sweet, you know, one of those tug at your heartstrings moments.
It's really important, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your hard work.
I have one question before we move on, um, the membership, I, this being the first year of the project, has the membership met expectations, or can you talk about that a little bit?
I don't know, Pam.
We've got information on that.
Yeah, our numbers are up there, Pam, did you have a prediction of how, how many you?
No, I think, it's hard to say with these types of, of programs, you know. I would be happy with a dozen students, um, for the size of the school. I think, due to the fact that, and December, when we had the informational meeting, there were forty-nine students, and you look at how many, thirty-six of those forty-nine are a part of the program, I think that's, that's huge.
And we expect it to snowball as the kids talk about it, that's what we've heard at RB, that it will really grow in popularity as, you know, somebody's friend joins and then they say, oh, I need to join Cougar Buddies too. So we do expect the numbers to keep growing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions on that?
Did we miss a page?
The spark?
It's coming, she reversed the order.
Okay, we have a different order. In the packet, it's reversed.
So, we have Laura Mandrela here, and she is one of our eighth grade ELA teachers. Um, and I know, actually, I was, I was sharing with you.
Yeah, I was so excited to hear about this.
Um, she was telling me about it, and, and then some of the, she's gonna share some of the great ideas that kids were sharing. Um, but it's, it's a small part of a larger motion that the eighth grade ELA teachers take on that then encompasses looking at a charity and doing some service-type work and, you know, really trying to make a difference as eighth graders. And, and the eighth grade teachers as a whole do a great job of really preparing kids to be productive citizens. So, I'm gonna let her talk a little bit about that.
You got it. Um, again, my name is Laura Mandrela, I teach eighth grade ELA, I know I've had some of you, some of your students in the past, um, and are, will soon in the future. Um, so, all year long, our number one goal in eighth grade is to make sure that we transition these students to high schools so that they are successful from day one. Um, that's our primary goal for all three trimesters. But trimester three, we take on a little bit of a different focus, and that is preparing them for the and beyond. And so, we are not just focused so much on the academics, although clearly, that's a part of it, but making sure that they are top-quality citizens, um, and beyond. And so, one of the things that we do is, we tell them that trimester three is not only about making you a high school student, um, but a global society member. And um, we tell them that our number one priority for trimester three is to teach them to quit looking in the mirror and start looking out the window. That's our goal for trimester three. And they get it pretty quickly. So our first unit is um, all based on philanthropy. And so, um, we have a number of reading standards clearly with the curriculum that we need to cover. And so, we do a lot of reading about philanthropists. And at first, it seems very obvious to go with a, a Bill Gates or somebody well-known. But in order to truly reach them, we have them read about philanthropists who are seventeen or younger, and the difference that they've made. And so their job is to research children philanthropists and get back to us and tell us what they've done. So that I can say to them, all right, well, if this eighth grader can, or if this eight-year-old can have a lemonade stand and rate five thousand dollars, what can you do for the world? And then they start to think like, oh, you're right. And so, based off of that idea, one, one of the people that I introduced them to, who was just a little bit older, was a student at the University of Illinois Chicago, who went downtown one day and realized that all the homeless people were asking for food. And so he had taken his sandwich out of his lunch and handed it to a homeless person, and received such an amazing response, that he went back to UIC and said to a couple of his frat buddies, you know, I felt really good over a sandwich, I mean, this is crazy that people would be that, um, you know, outspoken about a sandwich. And so, a couple of his buddies thought, you know what, we're in college, but we can afford three dollars for some bread and some peanut butter, let's make some sandwiches this weekend, and let's go downtown and see how many people we can feed. And that's what they did, you know, college students, very limited money, and, you know, very little effort to make a huge impact. Then they went back to UIC and the word started to spread, and next thing you know, they had a major pizza company that was giving them all the leftover pizzas at the end of the night. They had organizations from all over the college who were chipping in, all because one guy decided to give somebody a sandwich. So this is the example that I give to them. And so, um, I kind of pair that up with the movie Pay It Forward, where in the very beginning, um, Kevin Spacey says to his kids, you only have one homework assignment for this year, change the world and make it a better place. And so, on that particular day, they come in and the homework board just says, go change the world. And so, that's the only direction they're given, um, and then they're told to just go off and decide what that means. Only we say, you know, change your Hauser world, make this a community that people want to be a part of. And so, um, you know, the first year I did it was just last year, and um, I just tried it with one class, just to see how it would go. You know, there's that little element of chaos in the eighth grade that you're a little afraid of. So, you know, you don't want to let them go too quickly without knowing what they're gonna create. Um, and they took my breath away, I mean, I was absolutely astounded at what these kids came up with. And so this year, I thought, well, let's try it on a little bit bigger scale, and um, took it to uh, three of my classes, and basically just said, make Hauser the kind of place that people are excited to come to every day. And um, you know, the part of the Hauser community. And what they came back with, again, um, just absolutely blew my mind. Um, we had kids that, um, uh, two boys that went to the janitor and said, you know what, we're pigs, we admit it, we apologize, but we want to help. And so they came in after school, and they paired up with one of the janitors, and they started doing work. And one of the boys had to go play a volleyball game, and the other one was like, there's too much work here, I can't leave. So he stayed, and the other one went and played the volleyball game. When the volleyball game was over at six o'clock at night, he changed back into his clothes and went back. Because they're like, this is a huge job, Mrs. Mandrela. And I'm like, well, thanks to you, it wasn't as big of a job today. And that the janitors could not thank us enough, I mean, they just thought what incredibly thoughtful young men they were. Um, we had kids who made sticky notes and put them on every single locker, with just, and every single locker in the school said something like, be proud of yourself, because someone here is proud of you. Or, you know, smile, because you just might make someone's day. Every single locker in the entire school was covered. And uh, those kids were here early, and they were, you know, sticking them on there, and I had kids that were like, oh, look at this, my, you know, my sticky note says I could win the Hunger Games. And that made their day, and that was the whole point. And so that week, each and every day, somebody showed up, like, what's gonna happen here today? What awesome things are gonna happen here today? And it wasn't just the students and the custodians, it was the secretaries, it was the teachers. Um, they even, you know, we had one, um, two young men that said, you know, the Hauser community for us isn't just the students and the teachers here, but it's the parents too. And we have a parent that lets us, as a group of eighth graders, come over like, every Friday night. And I said, well, God bless her. So what we'd really like to do, because we have never actually said it to her, is we'd like to say, thank you. And I said, you know, I think she'd really appreciate that. And out there right now, there is a mom who actually was thanked by an entire group of eighth graders for letting them come over and have a safe place to make good choices on a Friday night. And they showed up with flowers and chocolate for her, and I'm sure made her day. And so, um, in the process, made their own. And so, um, it's just, it's probably one of the most rewarding things that we do during the year. Um, you know, like I said, right now, it's just my three classes, because, um, you know, that was seventy-two kids running around doing these things. I think opening it up to like, two-hundred-and-ten kids could just be, you know, mass chaos here in the eighth grade, people running to do things. Um, but it really gave them the idea, and um, this was the first year that, I actually got to receive a spark this year. I came in and um, had received something on my desk, and there was a thing full of tulips, and there was just a note that says, we get it now. And that's all it said, and I'm like, all right, my job is done. Um, and so, it's a beautiful introduction to our philanthropy unit. Um, about five years ago, um, the PTA was responsible for the eighth grade class gift, and they provided us with a number of wonderful things, we've had all kinds of, you know, trees planted in their honor and portraits in the hallway, but they had a hard time getting the eighth graders invested in the idea. So they asked for the help of the student council to help them to be able to raise some funds and be able to come up with some new ideas. Um, and then about four years ago, when we were starting to revamp our curriculum, um, and I became involved in the student council, I said, let's kill two birds with one stone here, let's have the eighth graders decide what they want their class gift to be. And we came up with the idea of the charity paper. Um, every single eighth grader picks a charity that is near and dear to them for whatever reason. Um, some of them have personal connections, some of them have personal interests, and some of them just choose one based on, you know, one that they've heard quite a bit. And they will do a significant amount of research and write a persuasive paper to their own peers as to why they should adopt that charity for the eighth grade class gift. Um, then each and every class will read all of the entries from their class, and they will pick, um, the best. pick the best ones. And so, then we will have one winner from each class. This year, we have seven sections of eighth grade ELA, so then we put all seven essays onto a Google forum, and everybody got to read them. So, this is authentic writing for a real audience, for a real purpose. And in the end, they chose one charity that will represent this eighth grade class, and we will announce to them this Friday who the winner is and kind of have a kickoff meeting.
So, they vote on it, they all vote?
They all vote, every single one voted on it, correct. Every, in their advisory, they all had a chance to read every single essay and decide which one made the most sense for them as an eighth grade class. It has worked out beautifully in the past because now they have the investment factor, and they know why they chose that charity, and they know who it was important to and why they wrote it. And so, last year, well, a few years back, we were able to do the ALS Foundation for a young man who had a personal connection with that. The year after that, we had the Make-A-Wish Foundation for an eighth grader who had actually received a wish that was part of our graduating class. Last year, we represented the Angelman Syndrome Foundation, as we had an eighth grader who had a sibling, a sibling that was a part of that organization. And we've had tremendous results. We averaged between three thousand and four thousand dollars that the eighth graders themselves will raise.
Wow, that's amazing.
Is this, is this handled as an assignment in the English Language Arts?
It is, the actual charity paper itself and the voting is. And then after we have chosen the charity, we have our kickoff meeting, the student council will help brainstorm ideas to raise the money, as will the eighth graders. And so, for example, I know we had a group of eighth graders that already went out at Christmas time and sang Christmas carols for money, and so, they're dying to find out what the charity's gonna be, 'cause they've already raised, you know, like two hundred dollars that they wanna donate to it. Some kids will individually do things like hold a car wash, or, you know, molons on a neighbor's street or what have you, but because it's their choice and their vote for their charity, they become really invested in it, and we also have a lot of fun fundraising. The things they come up with are just too much fun. And so, and teachers are always willing to help too. As a matter of fact, the teachers have already raised three hundred dollars this week. We paid ten dollars to get to wear jeans and I have to rent our clothes on the first week back. So, they're already on three hundred dollars just from the teachers to be able to give to the charity as well. And so, that's what we're looking forward to going towards the end of the year and keep reminding them that this is, this is their cause, this is their choice, and this is what they will be remembered for. And just like when we started out with the Spark Program, not that their name is ever attached to it, just that the effect that they created is attached and that someone in the world will be better off because of them, so.
There's your intrinsic motivation.
There you go.
That's, I was really excited. Thank you so much.
Questions?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you for letting us share.
Yeah.
No, I was talking with Merrill, I especially think it's important that we get to hear from all the principals, and that's a goal for us on the Education Committee, and I'm excited to hear on a regular basis what everyone's doing, 'cause obviously, we're not there every day, and I think it's really cool to hear what they're doing. So, thank you for coming.
Stuff like this is stuff you don't hear about, you know, when I'm sitting talking about curriculum adoption, you don't get to hear all the cool things the students are doing. It is really a good opportunity.
So, thank you, everybody. So, I think that concludes our Education Committee, so we can pass it on.
All I can say is wow.
Yeah, I know, so.
It's a cool place to be.
Thanks, guys.
I wanna go.
We just went from, like, you basically made me cry, now people are gonna cry, cry out of boredom. Let's move on to the Policy Committee meeting.
Don't feel like we have to say, we totally get it.
No, but I do, just to echo Sherry's sentiment, it's great to hear from Hauser, because I think parent engagement goes down as the kids get older, and so, you never really hear what's going on at the middle school, so it's, it's great to hear.
You should do today, nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
Nothing at all.
Thank you, go put on some jeans and relax.
Although, you know, how much do they pay? You could've upped the ante a little bit, you know, and raised even more money.
I said, for a hundred dollars, I'd do it for the rest of the year.
Oh, there you go.
Anything, then I'd have to get up and.
Great job, super. Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so moving on, Policy Committee. So, the, I wanna take this a little separately, because it looks like everything is under the IASB Press Update Ninety-One, which we have, but there are two policies underneath here that are not part of the press update, but from the Wellness Committee and a board member. So, I wanna, I wanna, if it's okay with you guys, pull out number one and number three and talk about those separately, then the rest, which are all a part of the Press Update Ninety-One. Is that good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. So, starting with the, so these are first reading of all of these policies, starting with policy two colon one one zero, qualifications, terms, and duties of board officers. From what I understand, Mary Rose brought this up to somebody. So, if you wanna go ahead and talk about it.
Yeah, I sent a link around. We are, our board policy states that our board secretary is a non-board member, and that's certainly the way it's been since I've been on the board. We actually, every two years, would reappoint either Sue Moorhead and then Juanita. And that is, and so, I just brought to the attention, because we did take Griff's recommendation to appoint Linda a few months earlier, so we're actually out of compliance with our policy. So, I noticed that the change that you made is just to say that, you know, just added a line to.
This comes straight from Griff, 'cause I, nobody told me about this policy until yesterday. So, this came straight from Griff.
Okay. So, anyway, so they added the line, and so, this morning, you know, I decided just to do a little Googling around to see what other districts are doing. I noticed at River Forest, first of all, those that have board secretaries, it's an elect, it's considered an officer-elected position. Again, I didn't look at hundreds of them, but, but I also looked at our, and I believe River Forest has it as a board position. RB has the identical policy to ours, which is a non-board position. And I went and I looked at Western Springs, because every once in a while, you go around and you look at other board meeting minutes, so different things to see if you can learn something. And I noticed that actually, the superintendent over at Western Springs actually does the minutes and signs them and does that. So, I, out of curiosity, went and looked at theirs, and their board elects their board secretary, and their board, and they elect the superintendent. They basically said it is the duties of the superintendent to be the board secretary. Also, so I was kind of wondering where this language came from, and I don't mean, you know, the change we made, the one that we've had historically, the one that RB and the one that River Forest has, you know, 'cause I suspect they both have come from the IASB. At one point, people had this option. And then I also, in hopes to look at that, I Googled the IASB website, this was a couple weeks ago when I came across this thing. And what they've pointed out is that, that there's actually a fair amount of staff work to the board secretary position. It's more than, you know, just signing documents, and there are other duties involved with it. And so, so anyway, so they, even if you have a secretary, a board member who is a secretary as an officer, there should be somebody in staff who does a lot of those duties, because it requires a regular presence in the office. So, so anyway, that's the background, that's the work that I've done on this. And here's my preference, my recommendation is that we have a vote to override our policy and keep Linda in the position until April. And then maybe when Martha comes on board, she can kind of look at the pros and cons and maybe research this a little bit more and, you know, make a recommendation to the board. 'Cause I don't, I don't get the sense this has been well researched as to, you know, why people do things. The only other thing that I do have a very specific question on is one of the duties of the board secretary apparently is handling some election duties. And a couple of years ago, the board president used to have a lot of, have some election duties, for example, challenging petitions, petitions, and those were changed about two years ago when the legislature, those were removed from the board president, because there was some recognition that board, board member positions are increasingly more political than they used to be. So, I would like to know before I, is our current policy up to date on what the board secretary's election duties are? Because I thought all of them were supposedly removed, but I'm not sure, our policy.
Pat, I know this was per Griff's recommendation, had you talked with him about the initial suggestion? Do you have any experience?
Yeah, after Mary Rose called this morning, I called IASB. Anna Laverne is the person who basically puts together the press booklet and the whole business, and she's kind of the person that ties together all of the information from the various law firms and comes up with recommendations. Very honestly, I asked her, you know, what are the pros and the cons of two different approaches? I wouldn't throw the superintendent one in there, because I'd have to decline that one. I don't wanna, I don't wanna write the minutes.
I don't like that either.
But, school districts either have a board member that's the board secretary, or they have someone else that's appointed the board secretary. And this lady really said it's kind of an historical thing, going back, that a lot of districts have done it a certain way for a long period of time. But the one thing that she said, which I think is a key, which is really what we're accomplishing, the way we're doing it, is she talked about best practice. That if you have a board member who's also the board secretary, and there is no one else, that board member then can't really get actively involved in any of the discussion, because they're so busy taking down who made the motion, who seconded it, the whole business. The fact that we have Margie sitting at the table, who's able to do the, you know, that part of it, the written form, and Linda still can function as a board member, sharing thoughts on different topics, is kind of the best practice or the ideal situation.
Yeah, I agree.
And so, that really is what came out of the conversation with IASB.
Yeah, I know Griff made the recommendation, but I also know that he didn't point out to us that we actually had a policy that governed it. So, you know, I think, again, it might've been just a historical thing, like you said, what people are used to.
You know, looking at this policy, it seems though that, under the original language, we're actually in compliance, because the secretary, they're talking about the secretary, "Oh, Linda, you don't do all of those functions."
No.
And they say basically, the secretary can delegate everything to somebody else, and it says interchangeably that even if we appoint a non-board member, the secretary for the would-be board member can act when that person can't act. So, it seems like it's, it's not the best language, but it, I think it's fine the way it is, 'cause it's used interchangeably.
Well, again, do we wanna do an election? Or do we want an appointment? Does anybody care one way or the other?
No.
I'm happy if Margie's here doing all those, thank you, Margie, duties.
You're not saying that the original language is consistent with what we're doing? I don't think it is. It just says that, the original language says the secretary shall be a non-board member who serves at the, so that clearly we're sort of violating that.
But then it goes on to say at the end.
That you can delegate, they can delegate it, so would Griff change to say that it may be a board member?
But the last sentence says, "The board appoints a secretary pro tempore," I don't speak Latin, "who may or may not be a board member if the secretary is absent from any meeting or refuses to perform the duties of office." So, that's essentially what function Linda's serving is when Margie's not here, or she acts like.
So, the main, the main thing that I do.
Say she's the secretary pro tempore.
Right.
So, the main thing that I do, and the reason Griff recommended it, is that Margie's not signing away on every, like, Margie's signature is not the one on all our documents. I don't know if there's a legal reason behind that or a liability reason behind it.
Now, Margie will be sued, you don't have to worry.
Exactly. So, from Griff's recommendation was that a board member be the board secretary for that function.
For the sole purpose of signing documents.
'Cause you're not recording the minute that Margie's.
When, when he recommended it, that is what he described. And so, my sole function has been signing the documents as a board secretary, reviewing everything that Margie prepares carefully, signing them so that it's my name on there. And then also, when we are in, when Margie's not around, I call roll. So, literally, my duties as board secretary are very minimal, and I, I don't have an opinion one way or the other on this. I think we just took Griff's recommendation.
I think there is an argument to be made to have another, independent, even though Margie is actually writing the minutes, for example, it is maybe a good idea to have another set of independent eyes to actually read them carefully.
Because I know that I'm gonna be signing these minutes, so I make sure I read them very carefully.
On the same way, it's like, well, okay, I gotta sign.
That's the only thing that I think it adds.
Well, you know, you make a valid point, then maybe we should just amend that policy altogether to ensure that your role is limited to, 'cause it sounds, they're all lumped together, is all these duties are performed by one person. Just segregate it out and say, "We're gonna have a board member that is the secretary and signs off on things, and the other board secretary does X, these things."
Right.
Is there any, is there any other reason, though, just to look at some of the official IASB version of the language when you have a board member? Because there is, there's a whole different, of course, they do say it's an election, you know, they call it an officer when it's a board member.
Right, and it's got a term length. So, basically, the meeting when we elect the vice president and the president, from what I, in the brief time I had to look at this, that all the policies I looked at had a term length.
You could elect a secretary.
Yeah, you, basically, the same night after, you know, our first meeting.
Yeah, it's part of the organization. And we used to, again, that would be the, I think the next meeting, we would appoint Sue and or Juanita, whoever actually served that function every two years.
I'm familiar with the title, "Board Clerk," for the person in Margie's role. There might be a reason to research, you know, how many school districts actually call the person who's a district office employee, "The Board Clerk."
Well, you make a good point. If you're gonna have a board secretary, then, as a board member, then it might be a change of title on, in the internal staff that supports that role.
There are legal documents that ask for the signature of a board secretary.
Right.
We know, we recognize that.
I've signed a million of them.
And that being an elected official rather than a district office employee.
That's right.
Is a best practice, because you have Juanita and Sue Moorhead going, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, you're asking me to take a role that I'm not comfortable with."
Right.
But, so the elected official is the board secretary, the board clerk is someone who's doing all of the legwork and publishing the minutes for approval by the board secretary.
And Rachel, to backtrack, couldn't it be simply saying that the board secretary may be a board member? Isn't it, wouldn't that be a simple enough change in the policy?
I think we should say the secretary, it sounds like should be the board member. I like the idea of just making a distinction, of here's the clerk, here's the board's duties, and here's the secretary, 'cause it's there, it is a legal term of art. And if we wanna make election out of it, that's fine, I don't have an issue with it.
Yeah. So, it looks like maybe what we should do, tell me if I'm wrong here, it sounds like a consensus of that we still wanna have an elected board member fill the role of board secretary in terms of signatures.
Right.
But that, obviously, I don't want Margie's job. I mean, I'm glad to have you.
This could be a coup.
So, that maybe we, I should look into, like, looking at policies that distinguishes the two, and that, if possible, I think might, it would be easiest just to do another reorganization meeting, it's a two-year term.
Yes.
With president, vice president, secretary.
Yeah, and I mean, in the meantime, we could always just, you know, vote to override our policy and continue on the way we are with you in it.
Yeah, I'm.
Whatever keeps us.
Yeah, I'm good. So, so I'm assuming then at the next policy meeting, I can bring a first reading of a different, you know, recommend, recommendation.
It's just a matter of language, really.
Yeah, it's just a matter of language, if we're all on the same page, which it sounds like.
Actually, if you do tweak it, you can bring it back for the second reading if it's acceptable. You don't have to go through a first reading again.
Right, 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 right. Okay, that's, that's what I meant.
As long as we're on the topic of this particular policy, we, we don't, it also mentions that we have a treasurer, which we don't have, actually. So maybe we should get rid of that language unless we, unless we decide to have a treasurer.
I believe, I believe what happens is that our treasurer is actually proviso in the township treasurer office. And I think somewhere, again, I've looked at a few policies today, somewhere at the bottom, it actually says that, the board, if you have a township treasurer system, they are your treasurer. And there's some language in there, maybe at the very bottom of that one, or some other one I read.
This is, the language is weird because this is the board, the board of education officers, our president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer, so it sounds, makes it sound like it's actually a person that's.
And I think some boards do have treasurers, so I think that, you know, if we want to tailor it to our specific.
Outside of Cook County.
Cook County, outside of Cook County.
Yeah.
Yeah, but maybe we should eliminate it altogether because it's.
David, is that your experience?
Every school district should have an investment policy, and within the investment policy, you'll see all kinds of references to school treasurer. And in Cook County, that school treasurer is the township school treasurer.
Unless they've done away with the position.
Yeah, unless they've done away with it.
Right.
Last year, the investment policy changed in, you know, the policy. And we actually went and made sure that the township treasurer was actually adopting, remember?
Right, I remember us making divisions and.
That they were actually going to be in compliance with the law on that particular.
Right. And certainly, the proviso township treasurer will not let us forget that they have that legal authority and that legal role with this school district.
Yeah, it didn't do any.
Those are the geniuses that invested, I meant, is that right?
Yes.
They're trying to go from, like, getting five basis points to 20 basis points.
That's right.
They're hoping to pick up, they're investing hotels in Florida.
That's great, great. Somebody else is going to be the treasurer. Should we make that an elected? So, so David, do you think we should alter it and remove treasurer, or keep that?
Or just leave it assuming anyway it's understood it's proviso.
Or look at what other Cook County, you know, look at other policies, see what they're.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think having a footnote to explain that the treasurer is the proviso school treasurer is probably sufficient.
Yeah, and that is what I saw, I don't remember which school I was looking at, but that's what.
But I've only looked at three, so it had to be in one of them. And, and I think all three of them were in Cook County.
Right.
Western Springs, River Forest, and, and Western Springs. Western Springs doesn't look like they use press, by the way, they look like they do something else.
Got a whole different numbering system.
They use push instead of press.
What? Did you make that up?
He did make that up. So, so we're in consensus on that, we can move forward to the next one.
Right.
Okay, so I want to skip.
And again, you can bring it back after it's tweaked for a second reading.
Yes, so we will bring that back to you for a second reading with the changes. Moving on, I'm going to skip over to, really quickly, and move to number three, policy six colon five zero, school wellness, just to give a little bit of background. Last, was it at the regular board meeting, or the last committee of the whole, no, last regular board meeting, we had a presentation by the wellness committee, Dr. Shaw. And they meant, they reviewed, do, because our policy states that we're supposed to have a, create a wellness committee and review our policy and procedures, they did that. So what they did is they brought some recommended changes to the policy. The current policy that's already, that we already have. And just to make note, that policy is required by law, we have to have a wellness policy. There's a public act and a, I can't remember the name of the, the law.
Can we just look at the footnote?
Yeah, yes. So, hold on, I just got booted off of this. Right, and so we, we stated that this year. So, the policy six colon five zero has been, been there since 2010 when it was adopted, and the recommendations of the committee are just to add two changes. The first change is under the goals for nutritional education. It's, our policy currently says nutrition education shall be integrated into various curriculum lessons, and then they're just adding, with some emphasis on impact of food allergies. And then they added an additional section for goals for social emotional learning. So those were the two, there's a whole section on that. Those are the two recommended changes they are mentioning, correct?
And most of that, Pam, correct me if I'm wrong, was, was drafted partially by you and one of the social workers?
Right, so the language was drafted by administration.
In reviewing it, the first thing that I noticed, and it was funny because Carrie came to the same conclusion when she read it, as much as we look at wellness and at board meetings, we talk about social emotional.
It's not in the policy.
And the whole child, that there was nothing in this that dealt with that important social emotional things, because if children aren't socially, social emotionally well and available to learn, then you're not going to have learning. So, you thought that it was important to add that, and we are doing some of the.
There's also new social emotional learning standards that were adopted back then and should be acknowledged.
So just a few other things I, I noticed in the, in the policy, since we're adding that section under the mission, we would have to add, there's a whole list of each goal we're going to go through, so we would have to add the, and social emotional learning goal. And then there's a few, yeah, so that's one thing I noted. And there's a few parts in the policy, and I never got around to doing this today, which I meant to, is that it directs you to the handbook for a certain page on the handbook. And I just was wondering if that actually is up to date since we updated the handbook.
The pages are probably not up to date.
Okay, so I can go ahead and look.
Oh, are they? Did you go and?
I did.
Oh, goodness, Margie, thanks.
Did you delegate their duty?
I delegated the duty to Margie for that, thank you.
Get that back. Well done, Margie.
So just, so I, I went today and yesterday and just read a bunch of different, of school wellness policies on a lot of our neighboring communities. The wellness policy, school by school, very different. It, it's not like a template for, from IASB in any way. It looks like you'd have to have, you know, certain, certain components. Ours is actually a lot more beefed up than most schools that I noticed. We have a lot more goal, you know, more goals. So just, just giving you my little history of what I, I learned today, so.
I guess that somewhere down the road, press will have more of its boiler template. It's a fairly new addition.
And a lot of the, the documentation basically says, like, tailor, you know, your school district should tailor this to your needs and your concerns with these basic mandates.
It's a work in progress, it's gotten a lot more emphasis, and quite honestly, it's really speaking to the whole child. It's not just academic anymore, it's.
I absolutely, I think this is great, adding this as an explicit goal of the wellness policy, adding this social emotional piece, I think is really important and necessary. There's one typo on the first goal, it says develop self-awareness and self-management skills to achieve school life and success. I think there should be, I think there's, the and might be in a different place or something, but that's minor. The other thing I would, I would just maybe wonder about, the very last sentence where it says, what, it says social emotional learning programs help develop students' self-regulation skills, social emotional competencies in school and community connectivity. I, that's a statement of fact, but I maybe would take it out of, because this is a list of goals as opposed to statements of fact, I would sort of assume the facts are sort of understood and just list the goals in this section. Those would be my two suggestions, but.
So you're seeing the first one, to achieve school life success?
Well, I don't know what it means, it says, it says skills to achieve school life and success.
I think it was supposed to be school and life success.
That's what I figured, too.
And then, the last sentence I would just take out because it's sort of underlying, that statement is underlying the whole purpose of having this section, which was kind of implicitly understood, I guess.
And there's a, there's a sentence in the first introduction that I would remove, too, just because I think it's, just, I don't think it's necessary for the policy. The second sentence in the introduction, it says a disturbing number of children are inactive and do not eat well. I, I don't think that adds.
It's an editorial comment.
Yes, it's editorial, it's already, our policy's already long, I don't think, I, I read that and I was like, ah. So if we're going to be amending the policy, I would, I personally would recommend taking that line out.
Not really inspiring.
Yeah.
Probably came out of IASB.
You think it did?
Oh, sure.
I'm sure it did.
We took what was added.
They're really good at this.
So if anybody else has any comments.
I, I think we can tailor it to our, our goals that we accomplished for strategic plan, and we did the whole climate and culture discussion, we had the table, you were in that, that group, if we can tailor it to those pieces, even better.
I have a couple of questions. First question is, under that, the goals for nutritional education, what was the logic behind answering, adding with some emphasis on the impact of food allergies? Pam, I'm looking at you.
There's, there's a certain, we're concerned about the increase of food allergies and severity of, of food allergies, and just to make students aware, came from the committee, about the different food allergies, and to be cognizant of those allergies, that other students may have those allergies, and to be respectful of that.
To your point, one comment I did, Pam and I did discuss at cabinet the other day regarding this policy was, we talked about the words health risks as well, and I don't know how the wellness committee would feel about that, but there's also the, the students with diabetes.
That's what I was thinking, too.
And there's a lot of other health issues out there that are surrounding the nutritional piece, and it's part of the reason why birthday treats and all that other stuff sort of became taboo was because it's more than just the food allergy kids. And my only concern about that, on the other side of the coin, was isolating the food allergy students from the, all other students who also may, you know, and having to be like, oh, it's the food allergy student fault that we're studying nutrition, when really, there's lots of health risks that are impacted by poor nutrition.
I would support language like that.
I would, too.
Because I think that it's, it's a much broader category that should be captured there. And, you know, I, I don't know any of these, these laws very well, I've never read any of them, the ones that are cited at the bottom, and what this is based on. But I would just ask the administration, this seems very, there are a lot of mandates in here, and I don't know how many of them are legal. This seems like a huge imposition, and I, and I go to the administration to ask, are, are these realistic? Is it required, and is it realistic to be able to attain all of these mandates within this?
The state seems to think so when they pass legislation. And, you know, we had a meeting today where we spent a lot of time talking about all the different types of testing.
Right.
And all the different programs that are coming in. And unfortunately, we're saddled with, when legislation is passed, we have to respond to it. And are these necessarily good things? Not necessarily, not necessarily, but are they things we have to do, unfortunately?
I can address part of your question, Rachel, too. Some of this is naturally embedded already, and some of the curricular initiatives that we have and that we accomplish. So the physical activity pieces and the nutritional educational pieces, not with food allergies specifically, but we have curricular units, in particular grade levels, that address some of those pieces directly and intentionally as part of the curriculum requirements by the state. There are others that are not as naturally embedded, like, everything that was added around social emotional is a piece of what we're already doing through our second step program and our social emotional learning program, so I'm not as concerned about that. I mean, when Griff handed it to me, he's like, this is your responsibility, so look at it. You know, and I went through it.
Make sure all these things are embedded.
I went through it pretty carefully.
This legislature has done so much that it's, it's burdensome. And periodically, this, the regional office of education has the charge of, of reviewing everything that a school is doing. For example, it's legally required in high schools that the potato famine in Ireland be taught.
On Wednesdays.
It sounds like a difference.
When the regional office of education comes to audit the school system, I highly doubt that they're checking for compliance.
Right.
In relation to that particular law. So there are, I think there are laws that are audited, and there's a close scrutiny of, of, of compliance, and then there's probably a lot, a bunch of laws, potato famine education maybe being one of them.
A little more loosey-goosey.
That are, yeah, a little less tightly enforced, or, or even considered all that important for a school district to be sure that they are following. That's why it's, it's beneficial when the state comes by and, and does this complete review, because they will look at all of your policies and then, and then ask, you know, where are you complying? And they are, they are giving you feedback on what's important.
Right.
As to what I think maybe not be all that important.
Well, what about, sorry, go ahead.
And what we did was, we were just, everything in here except what's in yellow is what was in board books, and that is kind of the state's work, and we just add up those other pieces. And the social emotional learning was basically, we thought it was important, I'm surprised, but the state has not put that in there, and social emotional learning are some of our standards, I would be surprised if in the future they wind up in there, and then maybe we could just take that language.
Right, it's, it's, yes, and this is just an opportunity before, in front of us to, we don't all go and study policy at night, maybe Mary Rose does, but I certainly do not, and so it's just an opportunity. I read it, read it through for the first time and was like, really? Especially that section under goals that promote student wellness in the school environment, it's, it's, it's just, you know, about not bringing cake to school, you're telling, you know, encouraging the parent organizations not to sell food, I'm like, okay.
That's like the word encourage.
Yeah, right, right.
But, but they are encouraged, I know that.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It's not sell food to students.
Reading these policies is a great way to fall asleep at night, though, Rachel. I mean, if you're having any insomnia.
Insomnia issues, noted.
Maybe we could reinstitute reading them all again like we used to. But anyway, I guess we can, I guess we can assume then that all the mandates in here are, are passed by law.
That's what I just wanted to clarify, yeah. Yeah, and looking through other school policies, they have very similar, like, the exact same goals, goals for physical activity, you know, ours just seem to be more spelled out. Theirs are a little more just general, we have goals for physical, physical activity. So, so is there consensus then to make some of those change? I can speak with Pam or Merrill about the health risk.
That's a good change.
Language.
I just felt like it's more inclusive, and I'm hoping the food allergy people will understand that, I just, I feel like we shouldn't be isolating one without acknowledging the other.
Totally, right. And then, I'm not sure, Jeff had mentioned the, the last goal that they added under social emotional learning, I'm not sure your feedback, since this was created by, you know, this language was created by Pam and a social worker at Ames, what their thoughts behind it are, maybe we can follow up on that. And I would like to take out that second sentence in the introduction, if everybody's okay with that.
I agree with that.
But if there is anything else, as you're looking through this, that you would like to let, you know, I feel like if we're updating this, we should just do a thorough job of it, so if you want to follow up with me, and then we'll bring it to second reading. Any?
Oh, if I had, if I had a change in the school day, which won't happen, but I'd like more recess.
Okay, well, I don't think us changing the policy is going to affect that.
I'm totally just kidding, I'm just kidding, yes.
Okay. So moving on to the press update, everybody's, I know you've all read these completely and you're very excited to discuss them all.
I actually did, you're welcome.
The second item policy, six colon one three zero, program for the gifted. It, it's just one of the five-year review policy, it provides focus to the board to monitor the program.
And we're having an audit next year, so.
Right, right, so we will be monitoring.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
Six colon one three zero, program for the gifted, item two. It seems very standard, so, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
There's new requirements at the state for reporting out on advanced learners in terms of a data collection, so now they've amended the policy just to make sure that everybody's periodically reviewing it.
And then I'm going to, again, because policy number four through 10 all relate to the same legislation that was passed, so I'm going to skip to 11 really quickly and talk about that. Student athlete concussions and head injuries, it's just an update in the legal references, so there's really no update to the policy, just the legal references.
But our current policy is, is shorter than this one, isn't it? If you look at our current policy, is it not shorter than this, the new one? Because I looked quickly at, at the current one.
The student athlete concussions and head injuries?
Yeah, it looked shorter to me, but I, maybe not, I thought it wasn't as long.
This one was just updated in the last press update, too, so I'm not sure if there's a.
Maybe the, okay.
There's a delay, because we already talked about this policy in the last.
And we instituted a new, okay. And when was that?
Yeah. I can double check.
No worries.
So policy four, items four through 10 all stem from, they're reviewed and rewritten in response to the Illinois General Assembly Public Act 099-0456, amending school code concerning student discipline policies. And the goal of that is to, like, the language in the press update was, eliminate the, the school-to-prison pipeline. So basically, trying to keep discipline as education rather than exclusion. So all of these policies were, were either rewritten, renamed, or, or looked at in response to this legislation. These policies need to be updated by, they're effective the first school day of next school year, so that's why we're looking at them now. The, the main one is item number five, policy seven colon one nine zero, student behavior. It was, it was renamed from student discipline to student behavior, and completely rewritten, it looks like. Many, speaking with Griff about this, many of the items in there say, contact your board attorney. So we will be doing that, we will be passing this policy through our board attorney, but before we do that, we want to make sure that all, anybody reading this policy has additional questions so that it's all done at once.
So which one are you looking at now?
Sorry, I am looking at policy seven colon one nine zero, student behavior.
Okay, did you, are you, are you just not, are you skipping the one before that?
Just simply, I only was skipping it because this one is the heart of it. Policy seven colon one five zero was only looked at in this press update in response to the legislation, which, which, you know, reviewed.
They're all related policies.
They're all related.
Okay.
The heart of the, the main policy that's changed is seven colon one nine zero. You're right, not to skip over.
Well, just, just on the seven one fifty, did, it looks like Griff made this change to modify this, this a little bit?
Yeah.
To make it so that if a, if the police want to interview a student, that the parent, that the superintendent tried to make sure that the parents or guardians are there, this instance happened a year earlier.
That would have happened this year, I think.
So it's kind of will attempt.
Will attempt, you actually will do unless there's an immediate health or safety risk, essentially.
That's a good idea. I had a Lombard police officer take a kid out in handcuffs last year before the parent.
In fact, I think that could be a huge problem in the community if the parents are everyone, unless there's like a real, real.
So this, so this policy, we would be recommending the language that Grif.
Right.
That's what seven one fifty.
We're the custodians of that child.
That's right.
And local parenting.
So I would like, I like this change that Grif has made.
I completely agree.
I think it's best practice to have that communication right there at that minute because you don't want to have.
I cannot imagine me taking my child from school. So are we all in consensus of?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, Jeff, I'm skipping, I was skipping around.
No, no, it's fine.
As I was trying to organize this all in my head, it all was revolving around the seven colon one nine zero, student discipline. So before we pass this through the board attorney, I want to make sure everybody has a chance to really read through this and make sure there are no additional questions.
One thing that caught my eye in seven one ninety is that they, they want us to prohibit medical marijuana.
Yes.
Even though it's prescribed to the kid. And that seems to me crazy. It's like if it's, if it's legal, if it's prescribed by a doctor.
We don't disagree with that because just think of the liability if it is prescribed.
You say, no, you can't have it.
And you can't have it. And the child has a seizure and dies, yeah.
Right, which, and then that is clearly the one that says, contact your board attorney. So, so I think.
Right, I would just, I would say, yeah.
Well, considering attorneys looked at this, I wonder what the rationale's behind this.
Well, interesting you should say that, but I have a friend who works for a school law firm that shall remain nameless, and he, his firm has drafted an entire version of this policy for the districts that they service because of the complexity of the recommended policies. And so they, the firms are, I don't know about ours, I haven't spoken to our attorneys, but a lot of the firms are drafting their own versions because of the complexity and the way the press policy was developed. The nuances in it.
And actually, friends of Grif, they said they do that from time to time and they will just provide it for all of their, and this, for all of their clients. And this sounds like a good one that they may be working on. It seems it's.
My, my colleague said he highly recommends that we definitely look to see if our attorney has.
Maybe get something that's already been written by a law firm rather than going back and forth ten times.
That the law firm may have a suggested version that we can look at and compare it to.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Cause it, I mean, it is.
Cause I was asking him about it the other day.
Yeah, it is a little strange.
Yeah, he actually authored the one at their firm, so I can get my hands on it. Contact him.
Is everybody in consensus with doing that? I certainly don't. I mean, I think this is definitely a policy I think we need to take our time.
This one especially with the exclusion is a very sticky one.
That's right.
And when the legislature passes legislation like they did, it's a nice open book for law firms to be able to tweak things and rewrite them. But this is one that probably really needs a real good look.
Okay, so, so we're all in consensus of that, that was, and if you have any specific questions, let's make sure we compile all that so we just have one. Is there anything else about policy seven one nine zero that people would like to discuss? I did notice one thing, it said, it was talking about this, the new legislation explicitly forbids zero tolerance policies. It does however, provide an exception for weapons. So I found that.
One to two years, right?
Yeah, that kind of.
It prevents a zero tolerance policy for what?
Explicitly forbids zero tolerance policies, period.
There were a number of districts that I, I'll tell you one in particular in South Cook County that had so many lawsuits related to the zero tolerance policy, it cost them a fortune. And that's pretty much what's evolved now, that that's not an acceptable approach, zero tolerance.
Isn't our.
Except in the, the weapon category.
I thought that our bullying policy might be a zero tolerance policy, or at least has been in the past. I don't know if it's worth looking at.
But at least it does.
I don't think it's.
Now, you're not. The problem with zero tolerance is due process.
Yeah, I don't think it's explicitly stated, zero tolerance.
If you have, if you have due process, then you're not invoking zero tolerance.
Right.
So you have to provide due process.
Right. So I just, I just thought that was an interesting, but it did, you know, it does prohibit, or it doesn't involve weapons, which is good.
Well, yeah.
I would think that might be one thing we might have zero tolerance on, is a weapon in school. I don't know.
The other part of that policy that I also would like them to take a real hard look at is regarding being on or off school grounds. If we're kind of, there's so much new law coming out in that area about what's reasonably related to school and what's not, I think that's something that bears scrutiny too.
Yeah, it seemed this, this policy is, as written, has, is quite broad because it does talk about stuff going on off campus, you know, online, internet stuff, you know, that kind of stuff is, so it does cover a lot of that.
Yeah. I, I completely agree with you.
But it may be too broad.
Yeah, right, that's possible.
Which could be a problem. Okay, there's no other questions, I'll move on to the next item. This is really exciting. Item six, this is the exhibit, the memorandum of understanding, which is new, a new exhibit three for policy seven colon one nine zero. Essentially, this is a sample template of a memorandum of understanding you would use with your local police departments to, if you want to create a very laid out version of how our policy and how they're going to, you know.
So it's how to communicate with them.
Right, so I've heard from, from people, like some, some people are saying we have a really good relationship with our police departments. Is this a necessary step? And then I've heard the other side too, so I don't know. This is just a recommended thing, this is not, these are just exhibits of sample recommendations. So I'm not sure what you guys feel about that.
What's your view on that?
Well, I, the one incident that we had to deal with this year, it really worked out okay. I think a lot of it was just an initial reaction. I was dealing with an officer who wasn't familiar with middle school and I think wanted to react the way he would with a high school kid. And once we had a brief conversation, they were very cooperative and we waited till the parents were able to come. And so I would say, yeah, it's been a good relationship. Had some time dealing with the, the police on the crossing guard agreement that we had and so spent some time with the chief. And they've been very responsive. I think it came out of the wellness committee. They were concerned about a particular street crossing and maybe an additional crossing guard there. I made the call, the police monitored that particular intersection. Didn't see a lot of kids crossing, but they're gonna go back the end of April when the weather is better. So everything we've requested of them, they've done a very nice follow up on. So I'm not sure that that's necessarily something that we really need to take a long look at. I think the relationship is there.
Would it be fair to say that you don't need exhibit E3 unless you actually are gonna draft an exhibit of understanding and, you know, or memo of understanding? I don't see the point of putting a sample.
Well, I think it's a good idea as far as a placeholder.
Yeah.
If anybody decides down the line to do it.
And we do have samples of others, of other documents in our policies as well. So I would agree that is probably a good placeholder in case we need to go down that path.
But as of right now, I don't think.
And we don't need the, the SRO, right, for the resource officer. We don't have a resource officer, so we don't, will not be ever using the sample of that. Is there any questions on this?
What is, what is the resource officer, exactly?
It's like a.
A lot of schools have police officers.
Or police officers.
Yeah, some villages have assigned school resource officers, designated school resource officers.
Let's hope we don't get there.
Yes, let's hope, let's hope that just stays as a sample in the exhibit.
We always have one at the high school level, but that's a different.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody who works for the police department, but is assigned here.
Although I will say, they did have a really good relationship for the high school kids at least, and you get them familiar with the police that they don't, it doesn't become confrontational necessarily, which I think is a good thing, but not that we need it for the little ones, but. Or something, so I'll have a designated one that'll do like once a week, be in the schools.
Yeah. So, so are we in consensus that at this point, we don't feel the memorandum of understanding is necessary?
Just a placeholder.
Yes, perfect. Moving on, policy, item seven, policy seven colon two zero zero, suspension procedures. Again, this was rewritten in regards to the legislation. Let me find where I'm at. I don't have that one. I don't have my, I can't find my notes about what it was. Yeah, no, I wrote notes on each one. I'm just trying to find, just, from what I remember though.
Designates the difference between in school and out of school.
In school and out of school.
Now we need to do more in school before we go to out of school.
Right.
I'm always a fan of that as a teacher. I think I'd rather have them in our hands where we can be with them and educate them. And having them at home, I think does some no good unless they're a danger. I just think that's, that's our job.
The only thing it did note is that there is, in the law, there are no statutes regarding in-school suspension, so we'd have to make sure we have our own procedures set up. I think that was the one note it had. So I'm not sure if anybody has anything to add to that or anything they want to say.
Out of curiosity, how common is our suspensions? I mean, are they, do we have a lot of them per year?
I would say from what I've been able to tell, this year, very few. A couple of in-school, but.
I, up to my head, we've probably had three all year long.
Three, and how long is the duration typically of a suspension?
Um, one day.
Just one, so three one-day suspensions? So this is really a big deal for us then?
No.
Very honestly, I've been in a lot of places, these are the nicest kids I've ever worked with. Yeah, very lucky that way. And you got a lot of that feel when you were listening to the two Hauser teachers speaking about what they've been doing this year.
So it sounds like we're all good at that. The next policy, policy seven colon two one zero is expulsion procedures, again rewritten in regards to the legislation. Again, from what I understand, it's not, you know.
It's a last resort.
Yeah. Yeah, and it, reading through the policy, it seems to make sense. So no comments on that one. Bus conduct, policy seven colon two two zero, bus conduct, really doesn't relate to us much because we don't have busing. However, again, it was just, just explicitly states in there that when you are on a bus, you have to follow the, the code of conduct put forth in policy seven colon one nine zero.
When you take field trips, so.
Yeah, so basically it's just making, it was just adding this new rewritten policy into the bus conduct. Very straightforward. And, and also the next policy, seven colon two four zero, code of conduct for participants in extracurricular activities, same thing, it's just making sure that, explicitly stating that in extracurricular activities, students are expected to follow the same discipline code. So all of these policies are just geared back towards policy seven colon one nine zero, which we're gonna have further work done on, or look into it further and talk to the attorneys. So that's all the policies. I know, can we have a teacher talk again?
Linda, I thought yours was much more interesting than.
Oh, right.
Just a suggestion, you pointed out that you're listing a lot of policies under the press update that aren't part of the press update.
Yes, I.
The title that we, I guess we used in the past was board policies currently under review.
I, I, I made note of that.
Okay.
And the agenda just wasn't updated, but it, yeah, moving forward it will be.
I just went and looked at what we called it. And then there is also a whole section that we did periodically, apparently we're supposed to look at our policies every five years and the IASB gives us a list. Now, in this case, they changed, they actually changed a couple, but I, but we have.
They do, they, in the last press update, we had a whole list of the five-year reviewed policies.
All right, but.
They were brought to, there was like four of them that were, we talked about. So yes, the.
So they're doing that automatically.
They are doing that.
They give you the list, I guess.
Yes, and it was, three of them from the last press update were the five-year review and one of them from this one is.
Yeah, but these were actually changed. Yeah, cause they give you a whole list of five reviews that are not, which they're not recommending, but they recommend the board looks at it anyway. Anyway, we had another category, there were three titles that we had. That's the only thing I'm mentioning.
Okay, and so on that, I'm, I'm done, I will move.
Ending the gavel over.
Mr. Regan?
Thank you.
Oh, wait, unless there's something else.
Just, just a reminder, on the board secretary, you know, that policy, I would like to know if there are currently election duties and what they are.
Right, election duties.
And Linda, I believe most of those are straight to the county clerk's office at this point. They've taken a lot of that stuff away. But we can double check.
I can't imagine having gone through that, what could be possibly left that they don't do.
Yeah, I noticed there's still one listed there.
At Ores Office, yeah. And just one final note, if you do have a policy you would like to be reviewed, if you could just let me know directly, that would be great because I was, I got a little surprised yesterday by.
I didn't, I didn't ask for them to do anything with it, I just pointed it out.
I'm, I'm just stating it, just so that I can be in the loop and try to do some of my own work, research, so.
I mean, do you have any suggestions? I mean, as the policy chair thinks that we should be thinking about the future, like the next, you know, six months or the general topics or?
At this moment, no, I don't.
Linda, there was, there is a list from the minutes when we used to do the working committee of.
Right.
There's a list of things that was recommended at the time, we looked at and customized. Couple of them were to dovetail with the CBA. So I mean, that list exists and.
Okay, if you could, I asked you last time if you could send that to me, if you want those relooked at. Cause I, I'm not exactly, I have, must have lost some of the documentation or, you know, so if there's anything that you would like to be looked at, please, please send it to me.
Yeah, like I said, I'll, I'll take a look at it. I believe I've sent them a couple of times, but that's all right, I'll, I'll take a look. I don't have a strong commitment to changing any of them outside of the fact that if they are CBA related, they probably should be looked at.
Okay.
And I would just like us, especially when Martha comes on, for us to talk about our strategic plan and see what is it that we're attempting to do and do we need policies that require changes? I think that's a good starting point. But I'd like to include Martha, obviously, when she comes on.
And I know, I think there's been interest in the past of looking at the hiring procedures and policies around that and suggestions, and I, again, think that might be something we want to wait for Martha on. So those are the, yeah, those are the only two things I was thinking, but if you guys have any other.
That's for me, our working business soon, so I'd like to tailor it. Mr. Regan?
All right.
You're past your time, ready.
Linda, finance, you guys are.
You're done, eight forty-five.
Thank you, Linda, that was scintillating.
For me as well, thank you.
So Mr. Sellers has some records prepared for us with staff recommendations, financial project, projection, as well as an update on summer projects.
Well, the, this document was prepared in response to a request to cost out the financial impact of recommendations that were presented to the board at the last meeting. Four point five net with, with changes in, you know, among those, the total of four point five of certified staff was approved by the board. So at this point, I think it's probably Mr. Pat's.
The additional things that we had?
Your turn to, to take over and describe some classified staff or non-certificated.
Well, this was, this was the thing that I had handed out in December, what I called perceived gaps in the system. And I think Mr. Sellers actually built this into its projections, the fact that I think it's very important and Linda can speak to this one, when we did one of those follow-ups after one of the board meetings, you know, people were really thinking, boy, the nurse category and a couple of others like that. And I think we really have filled all the gaps right now, except for the fact that Hauser has a point eight two nurse. And I had recommended back in December that we take a look at that and make that person full-time and that we have a, a nurse that goes in between Blythe Park and Hollywood. And you have the early childhood program at Hollywood and yet half the, the week, there is no one there in the medical field covering that area. So the recommendation was to hire another full-time health aide in this case. And probably Pam, I would think that if we had a, you know, the nurse that goes between Blythe Park and Hollywood, and if we hired a health aide, we would probably skew and have the actual nurse probably based more at Hollywood because of the early childhood program.
It may depend, your, your, depending on.
On the actual, the medical needs. On the actual medical needs, but at least that would give us the flexibility to be able to cover both buildings. And the other part of the perceived gap was to set up Ames structurally as having two secretaries in the office, as opposed to a secretary and the two midday assistants that are there at this point. You have a number of secretaries, whether they're willing to admit it or not, I think it's kind of floating around right now, that you have a few secretaries that are not too far away from retirement, and they're looking, you know, possibly in the next couple of years to retire. And I think it would be good to have some, you know, some cross-training. And, and as we did, I think it was back, probably in September, you know, we took a look at the Central School situation and created a second secretarial position at Central. And I think that was the, the final part of the perceived gaps, adding a point one-eight to the nurse at Hauser, a full-time health aide that would cover the situation between Blythe Park and Hollywood, and then an additional secretary at Ames, replacing the two midday assistants. And I think, David, I think you said you built that into the financial projections that you have.
You know, I think it's important that the board understand the, I mean, there's complexity from year to year, you know, and, and so, in order to try and make it clear, there are pages in your materials, one is titled resignations and retirements, and then the next page is titled replacement hires. The, the FTE total at the bottom of those two pages is identical, and it's identical in each category. So, basically, everything's going to be captured on those two pages for which there is a one-for-one identical replacement due to resignations and retirements. In the, in, on the next two pages, you have additions and subtractions, and the additional positions are listed in the, in the non-certificated as the one point zero secretary, point one-eight, part-time to full-time nurse, and then one point zero nurse, or two point one-eight. A subtraction is the elimination of two mid-days, and that's on the next page, of zero point five-nine and zero point five-nine. So, when you go to the summary, it's showing a net of one point zero zero of a, of a staffing increase in the non-certificated area. So, you know, hopefully, you know, the, the information is understandable in this format, where you're, you're seeing the, the, you know, pure replacement, and then where you've got additional positions or an increase in FTE, if everything else were staying the same, and then subtractions where you have a decrease. So, at this point, the recommendation is for a one point zero net of all of those changes.
I think that, that Mr. Pat's raising, you know, many valid points here about, you know, what would be desirable in having an extra nurse at the elementary schools, you know, replacing the, the two part-times with, with a full-timer. Those are, those are desirable things, but I guess my question is, what's the cost? I know it's built into your projections, from what I can tell from the projections, it looks like, if everything is, if all of your assumptions are correct, we start going and drawing down our reserves in 2020. So, in four years, we start deficit spending, is that, is that, do I read that correctly? Just the very last bottom-right corner of your table, excessive revenues over expenditures. And that's positive up until 2020, where, where I see it kind of going to zero, is that right?
I don't, I'm looking at this page.
The very first page, yeah.
That shows twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty, yeah, so that, two thousand twenty.
Five years out, we go to zero.
So, that's when we start going deficit spending, basically. So, that's, that's under these, four years from now, under the assumption that.
Well, it's, it's not deficit spending, it's, it's balanced budget at a zero.
We start drawing our reserves, basically.
We, yeah, the, the, the very, very bottom line is one that is near and dear to my heart, because I like to support facilities improvements, you know, I'm a business official. So, eight hundred thousand dollars per year is affordable under this projection. It's in year five in 2021, when you'd be cutting back on your ability to strongly fund facilities improvements out of your regular operating resources. And at that point, you have ninety-one point five percent of a year of expenditures in cash reserves unreserved.
So, at that point, we have to start cutting back on our capital expenditures, and also, we are no longer running an excess of, of revenue versus expenditures.
Correct, this, this, this projection, as is the case with all projections.
Is subject to many, many assumptions, so I'm not going to hold it, I'm not going to come back in four years.
It's, it's supposed to be the, the, the middle-case scenario, understanding that there's variance. Your, your percentage increases, it should be noted, on revenues are a pretty modest.
Pretty conservative projection, right.
Two point two, one point seven, one point eight, one point six, and one point six. And that's assuming that a, you know, a difficult scenario with the CPI continues. And a zero point seven CPI coming in for 2017, eighteen was, was not good news for all school districts under the tax cap.
Right. The other question I guess I have in this context is, if I, if I look at your, your table on the second page, you have a table of how the number of staff have changed through time. And in the top part of the table, you look at certified faculty. That's the first part of the table, and in 2013, fourteen, there were a hundred and twenty-five full-time equivalents, and next year, we will have a hundred and forty-five. So, that's an increase of twenty over these three years, which is about sixteen percent. And, same time, the number of students in those four years, or three years, has basically been flat. There's been no change in the number of students roughly. So, I guess, I see, I see a lot of growth here in staffing.
And, and looking at the individual categories.
School psychologists.
The, there has been growth in the elementary and the junior high, but there has been significant growth in psychologists, social workers, and, and I'd have to do a retrospective, a historical analysis, but some of these were services that we were contracting with Ladsy.
That's the explanation, yes.
Even the elementary's teachers, we went from seventy-three to eighty-two, so that's nine.
Right, right.
Number of students are the same, high school, we've gone from forty-six to fifty.
We added the ECE program, or the, the preschool. So, that, that, I'm not sure how many.
Right.
And, and just in the, the recent thing the board did with the additional four point five FTE positions, three of those were basically mandated.
Yeah, you're bilingual, they're mandated.
I'm not, just to be clear, I'm not, I'm not saying this is wrong or bad.
Just questioning.
Right, oh, yeah.
I'm just saying that we've seen a sixteen percent increase in the number of full-time equivalent employees in three years, and the number of students is exactly the same within twenty or something like that. So, like, we've hired, we're hiring four and a half new people next year equivalent. I just like, at some point, we have to say, well, and then we're, four years from now, we're going to be running out of money, not running out of money, but at least starting to go deficit. Like, I'm just saying, like, we have to be a little bit careful about whether the things that are desirable, which all these things are desirable, are actually affordable in the long run.
Well, again, not knowing what the future holds, but, you know, the kindergarten class that we have this year is one of the smallest.
So far, yeah.
And we still don't have a really large enrollment at kindergarten at this point.
We're about the same as we were.
Years down the road, you may be looking at the enrollment dropping, which in turn would create the need to cut certain positions, except obviously the mandated ones. And so, your, your revenue flow probably will be what David is projecting, where the expenditures won't be, because if you lose a couple of salaries every year over a three, four-year period, that's a substantial difference in money, too. So, there's so many variables in this equation. You know, I applaud David for being able to project it out that far, but I don't think he'd want to be held to an exact number four or five years down the road.
May I approach the bench? I mean.
Approach the bench?
I'd like to pass out.
No, don't pass out.
Another consideration, and this actually relates to the next topic of, or two topics of discussion later, and that is where we are with our current fiscal year. The current fiscal year is, is looking good. The, the projection that you have is based upon budget, and, and once we conclude the current fiscal year, we'll have to, you know, revise the projection. Right now, we're, we had a two point zero four seven million dollar balance of revenues minus expenditures, and it looks like we're, we're going to come out about four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
To the good.
Stronger.
Right. Again, I just want to interrupt you for a second, David, and David, I think does something very similar. I did these things for twenty-two years, I would always underestimate the revenues and overestimate the expenditures, so that what the budget looked like at the end of the fiscal year was, as David is saying, you know, a lot more positive.
And, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, you know, engage in an argument here, what I'm, because, because your point is very well taken, that the CPI, looking into the future, if it stays at, at zero point seven going on to the future, then the school district would probably be looking at having to cut staff, you know, because staff is really your, your largest cost. So, so, I mean, that, people, people are given an opportunity to have an employment contract for a year, and then at the end of that time, we're all subject to layoff. And, and so, you know, the boards of education do have to consider cutting when their fiscal resources tighten up. So, again, this is a financial projection that's supposed to be a middle-case scenario, I just wanted to apprise you, and when we get into the discussion of the math financial implications, the conclusion of our current fiscal year is, is worth your, your looking at.
I have a question about the eight hundred thousand kind of number for the facilities. Knowing what you know about what we want to do with playgrounds and with roofs, do you think that's reasonable? Do you think that's a, knowing all the things that we want to do, I'm saying, do you think it should be bigger? What we've been talking about doing, or is it a, a low number for us?
I, I sometimes scale it based on my own experience. And, and where I used to work was probably about twice the magnitude, at one point three million square feet under roof. This school district has about two hundred and fifty, two thousand square feet under roof.
Give or take a couple, right.
And, and the expectation where I used to work is about one point seven, one point eight million dollars per year. Doing eight hundred thousand per year with two hundred and fifty thousand square feet under roof, knowing that we've had a lot of discussions about various things. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, there, if you start talking about constructing a kindergarten facility.
Whole different.
Then, then you're talking about accessing bonded debt capacity. That's kind of a different type of initiative.
And I have one other question that I know you don't have the answer to, but I'm always worried about state implications, pensions, and things like that. Do you have any worst-case scenario advice for what we should do in the event that things come down to us? Should we be preparing, you know what I'm saying?
My, my flippant, or rather off-the-cuff or knee-jerk reaction to that would be that the state of Illinois, in all of their discussions of these gloom and doom types of financial impacts on school districts, have always said that there would be some phase in time.
Gradation, yeah.
During that phase in timeframe, you sit down with your unions, you sit down with your entire staff, and you say, look at what's on the horizon, we're all going to have to tighten our belt together.
Right, okay.
And I think that school districts, you know, maybe facing that, the state of Illinois is going to give us some lead time, and that's why, you know, a three-year contract with your, you know, as a collective bargaining agreement, is probably the most you want to do is three years, based on, or put in some type of a language that says that there's an opener on salary if the state of Illinois offloads pension obligations. So, that's, that's a huge potential impact.
Yeah, I know, I know, that was a devil's advocate kind of question, I'm just, it concerns me, because you never get an answer about budget from the state, and I don't know what to do.
They haven't passed the budget.
No, it wasn't even on the, it was not the agenda today, so.
They don't have any money.
Yeah, so I was just throwing that out there for what do we, what do people like us do with it?
The only thing you can say, though, is, and David verified this, if something like that happens, you know, the catastrophic stuff, probably eight hundred and some school districts in the state will go down faster than this one will.
Oh, I know.
I mean, you're in a, you're in a very nice position in a lot of ways.
I get it, but we have so many cool things we want to do, you know.
And, and just listening to the Hauser teachers tonight and what's happening at the middle school. I mean, you've got some fabulous things going on, and honestly, when I did that thing in December, all I did was I looked at the overall picture, and I said, if I were able to fill certain slots, this is what I would do.
Yeah, things are desirable. One question I have is about the paraprofessionals at Ames, that we have two, two of them currently, and.
Two midday assistants, right.
And you're proposing to replace that by one secretary.
One secretary, right.
But it would cost us more to.
Well, because you have the, the deed for all of the other things that go with it. I'm blanking on the word.
Profits.
The, the other benefits, yes, insurance coverage, that type of thing. That's really what drives the additional cost more than anything.
Yeah.
David, I think I've asked this question before, but I'm not sure I remember or understood the answer. Couple of years ago, we hired a bunch of Ladsy staff, and they, you know, instead of going to Ladsy, you know, we have them on staff. And I guess my question is, did that help or hurt us financially? Is there a way to measure that?
Or if it was a good idea for other reasons as well?
I don't, I don't know that a clear answer of that is possible, because every year, you have a different mix.
Population, students.
Student population being served. Your, your, your two point three seven eight million peak of Ladsy tuition and other is, is now, for the current fiscal year, one point six four one million. And it looks like, according to our year-to-date results, is going to come in about one point five seven six, you know, let's say, one point six million.
What exhibits are you looking at? I'll probably look at it later.
Well, it's the first page, the financial projection, the row is titled Ladsy slash tuition slash other. So, the, the reduction from two point four million down to one point six million is an eight hundred thousand dollar reduction in cost, or let's say, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
The, the, the benefit of doing that is going to be partially shifted into the salaries that Dr. Miller was just noting, but not to that degree. The, I'd say probably maybe a certain portion of the, of that eight hundred, seven hundred thousand is, is that cost benefit of, of bringing those Ladsy people in-house. But the vast majority of it is fewer students. And at any time, that, that is an area that you should always worry about, if you want to think about things to lose sleep over. Seeing that cost category balloon suddenly in any given year is certainly a possibility. Fortunately, over time, you know, you know, when we're doing budgeting, we're kind of looking at, at what we expect to be a midpoint.
I think for me, it's, it's all about the child's care, so whether we, if we brought the person here, is it better for the child, then we have to do it, I just don't think.
You have more control that way, too.
Well, and it's, it's more consistent for us, maybe, maybe Pam can speak to that better, but.
It's, it's dependent upon the child's needs, of course, but, you know, whenever, you know, our goal is, and our mandate is to have children in a least respective environment, whenever we can do that, that should be our mission.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all agree that, you know, we want the best for the child, but I'm just.
I, I don't think there's going to be a really clear answer to your question. And the reason why it's unclear, and will probably remain unclear, is the difficulty of, of factoring in a completely different mix of students.
Is, is it, is it helpful or easy to have that line along with the student population each year that are served by that staff?
Yes, I, in fact, that's.
Are you talking about the staff we've absorbed, or the kids that are outplaced?
Well, actually, both.
That's a good suggestion, I can add that to this exhibit. This is an exhibit that's in your budget preparation materials, and at the bottom of each of these columns, we can put the, the fall housing enrollment number. We could also put the number of special education students that are, are being served. I'm accustomed to those types of statistics also being included. I just, you know, didn't think of it when producing that particular exhibit.
So, a lot of numbers, no doubt, you know.
Any other questions for David on staff or financial projections?
Uh-uh.
Great, you want to move along?
Move on to facilities.
So, I have, I have four topics to cover pretty briefly, I, I think, I hope. Blythe Park Windows Replacement Project, Mr. Pat and I visited Blythe Park and looked at the Cigna Systems sample installation. It is notable that the profile of the window has a, you know, there is additional material that reduces the, the size of the pane, you know, what is, what is glass. So, in other words, you could have a, you know, here's the, here's the window space that you can see through, it's just slightly less window space that you can see through.
So, the mullion or the frame is larger than what was existing?
Yes.
How big is that effect, is it?
It's about a, it's, it's a half inch, might even be, yeah, it's a half inch all the way around.
But to both of us, it didn't really look very different, except for the fact that the window space was.
We're looking at it from the standpoint of, of people who, who would apply this to our own homeownership, not to someone who is, who is faithfully trying to achieve a true historical preservation. So, I did call Mr. Piple, Charles Piple, this afternoon. I, I apprised him of the installation being available for his review, and that will take place, I think he, just the way he indicated over the phone, I imagine he'll be over there within the next few days. And the Riverside Historical Commission will give us feedback. If they're, if they're really unhappy with, with it, then I'm sure they'll let us know. If they give us a thumbs up, then we have a potential to save over a half a million dollars. Because all of our, and I, I'm saying that with some confidence in that Mr. Radke and I have both contacted Cigna Systems customers, and the claim, well, first of all, they, they give you a ten-year warranty. Ten years is a pretty good amount of time, and their, their past installations are now twenty to thirty years old in a number of cases, and you have customers that say, no, these windows are not fogging up. We're continuing to, to experience the benefit of going from single pane to double pane with all of the energy efficiency improvement that that new, you know, that additional layer of glass, single pane to double pane provides.
Is the seal, is supposed to be airtight, or is it just, is it, is it, I mean, can air go back and forth between the two panes?
I thought he used the word hermetically sealed.
Seal, airtight.
Yeah, so it's.
It's not like magnetic.
And he's, and he's, he's very confident. I mean, he, you know, if you just talk to this guy, he's got a very thick accent, but he's as confident as can be.
What's in between the glass, is it just air, or is he sucking it around in a vacuum, or is it?
Yeah, I think it's a vacuum sealed.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a vacuum sealed, vacuum sealed during installation. I asked him, you know, "How competent and reliable are your installers?" And he said, "Well, my son is one of them and he's going to take over the business once I retire." And he will honor the warranty, or maybe his grandkids or whatever. But either way, he's, he's confident that they're going to stay in business and that the installations are being done by people who know what they're doing. Because obviously, they have to be done correctly. But a 10-year warranty means that if we have a glass, you know, something that fogs up and there's obviously a leak in the window, we have recourse for 10 years.
You know, you need to occasionally invite them back to fix a window. It's not a big deal.
No, that's right. But it's, I, I asked Ms. Gorman what she thought when she looked at it and, you know, she had a positive view as far as.
I thought it was, it looked almost, like, I couldn't tell from the outside at all.
Right.
On the outside, there was, there was a little bit of difference, but I don't know. I don't know, you know, how it started, how they would.
As, as Mr. Summer said before, we look at things from the standpoint of if it was our house, what would we do? And there's no way that we would spend the extra half a million dollars to make it look a little bit different, maybe more historically preserved. I'll be curious to hear what Charlie Piple has to say.
Wasn't it the state historical commission that told you about this?
Right. When, when we met with Mr. Piple, you know, one of his comments was that the state of Illinois has authority to step in and, you know, and maybe this is too strong a word, but prohibit doing something to a historical landmark or whatever. In this case, Carol Dyson is the chief architect for the state of Illinois. I can't imagine there being an objection coming from the state of Illinois. Because it's a system that they actually have said has been successful in other locations. And as Casimir is indicating, you, you do see the original material. And I think that there's a preservation quality aspect or value to that. You are, you are maintaining the existing steel material.
So any board members that want to.
They were very meticulous about it. They were there over straight around about 7:30 and I don't think they left until after 1:00. Maybe they were just working on it. It was like the window right next to my office.
Just one, just one window? It took them five hours?
They were there for a long time. So I know that they were being.
And we've sent them.
They were meticulous about the application.
We've sent Cigna the drawings, you know, the architectural, so they, and they came in, came back with a quote of under $300,000. And it's likely that if we went with the highest cost, Hope's Steel Windows, we'd be talking 1.2 million. Maybe 1.3 million including asbestos abatement. So 1.3 million including asbestos abatement as compared to under $300,000. You don't have to do any asbestos abatement with this Cigna system.
Do they touch up the paint and all that? Because some of the paint's peeling.
Yeah.
Are they, is that, does that include it?
They are doing some touch-up, but it's on the exterior of the building.
Okay.
They're not, you know, they're not going inside the building envelope. They're doing some.
When they're done, the window's going to look like new. It's not going to be like cracked paint or anything like that. Is that correct?
No, and, and I, you know, I invite every board member, if you have time to, to take a look. It's right on the opposite side of, if you're at, it's on the park side and right next to the principal's office.
Right.
So in respect to that entrance on that western facade, which way is it? Is it left or right?
It's the west.
The southwest corner?
It's the west, it's west wall. Like, towards the, like, the southern side.
The southern entrance on the west side.
Okay.
Got it.
Just to the left of that. Might be the best way to put it.
Opposite that playground.
Yeah.
Opposite the playground.
Yeah, I was going to say. There you go. So you don't think, I mean, as far as the teachers and. So Casimir, I'm sorry to ask you a question, but you don't think that, you know, the students and teachers, it's not going to impact the way that they interact with their space or the light or anything like that?
No.
You can hardly tell except for.
I think the chilliness by the windows.
Is more intrusive, right.
A lot more, right.
Thanks, great.
I think it'd be good for any board member that can swing by to take a look at it.
Yeah, I'll definitely try and do it.
It would, you know, it'd be helpful us, for us to have that insight as David talks about this in the coming months.
Yes, absolutely.
Should we swing by?
Blythe. Blythe.
Blythe Park.
Where the window.
Just look at the window?
The one window that was installed. But don't worry, we won't scare you in the middle of the day or anything.
Just go to, go to the principal. I suggest you go to the principal's office, check in and have somebody take you.
That's right.
Okay.
I'll go after school hours.
Paving project.
Creepy lady.
Paving project, the striping plan is, is being reviewed by Principal May and Principal Gatz. And they have just, you know, I learn something every day. I've learned that they have some ideas for some changes. And, and so they're in the process of bringing forward some of their ideas. And what I'd like to emphasize right now is that we have time. We had a pre-construction meeting this afternoon with MJ Paving. We don't have to give them a final striping plan until, I actually said the middle of May. They actually said the end of May, so.
You didn't hear that. He still wants the middle of May.
Actually, it's the end of May.
I tell everybody two weeks, you know, give myself some lead time, leeway. So we have plenty of time to make some decisions. The, so that's the striping plan. Regarding the bicycle, we, we have within the bid specifications slots for 116 bicycles that are Hauser only. To go, the, we added replacing the bicycle racks at Hollywood. So we would be going to, let me, let me think. It's 100 and, it's 216 at Hauser Central, 30 at Hollywood, so it would be 246. So we're, we're more than doubling. We're going from 116 to 246. More than doubling. And the cost of that is approximately $27,000. Now, that includes concrete footings in probably 80% of that, of that quantity. There's some thought about having a greater number of those bicycle racks be movable. But we need to, we need to, we need to explore some, some strengths and weaknesses of that recommendation. I don't want buildings and ground staff moving 250-pound bicycle racks on a regular basis. So we have to be, we have to, you know, examine the pluses and minuses of, of alternative ideas. Right now, I, I don't know where this is going to, to land in terms of a recommendation. So I'd call this ameliable and still under the heading of brainstorming. But if, if $27,000 is the worst-case scenario, now you know. You know, that's as far as cost is concerned. The reason why it's so much money is that the, the, the original spec was for these things that are called wave racks. And going to the U-shaped racks is, is more than twice the cost. And then the installation with the U-racks includes footings to hold them, you know, to secure. Anyway, I, we, we've asked for the, for MJ Paving to come back to us again. They had two companies that they were working with. And they need to come back to us with a greater level of detail. We need to know exactly how many were, you know, additional as compared to what was in the bid. And we don't think right now that they're giving us full credit as a deduct for what was in the bid. So right, you know, whenever you, whenever you've already awarded a bid and you're going at a contractor for a deduct, that, that can become an issue. Right now, they're only calculating the deduct for the 116 rack at Hauser as a $4,800 deduct. And we think that's baloney. So respectfully. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, work with them on that. And I'd say we'll have an update within the next, you know, couple of weeks. But a lot has to be discussed and massaged before we come up with a final recommendation that I think everyone will be comfortable with.
I have a minor.
Or maybe there, there'll be a recommendation that not everyone is comfortable with. But we have to recommend something.
Minor question about the movability of them. I, I thought I understood during the wellness report that they would only be moved for the snowplows. And would you consider that a regular basis for movement? I'm just, couldn't we go with the standing feature? On an everyday situation? I mean, how often does that happen that they be moved? Because that would save a lot to not have the poured footings.
Well, I, I guess the, them being movable, I know we have very, very well-behaved students. But we don't want to have, have an ongoing operational hassle with kids, you know, getting them out of kilter and, or, or even in a mischief fashion, moving them around. We, in other words, we don't want to have bike racks that can become a nuisance because they get moved around by the kids.
Okay, that's just maybe what I understood from the presentation, but.
On the other hand, we're looking at the area where, as I'm sure you've seen, there's parking of pods for the theater. And, and those, that's a kind of a dead space that Principals May and Gatz are looking at. How we might incorporate that space into our discussion of, of where, how, where our bike racks are and how they're utilized. The question then becomes, how many bicycle spaces can you fit within that? There is a man door there and there's an entrance. So you have to have some buffer space between, between, between doorways. You can't put bike racks right in front of doorways or anything, you know, they're too close. So all of that is reason why, right now, this is still a brainstorming and a fairly muddy set of considerations. And I don't really have any, anything to, to give you that's concrete, except to say.
Kind of except at the bottom of the bike.
The worst-case scenario is $27,000.
Okay. And another minor question. I know we had approved the basketball hoops. Have the principals been involved in the placement of those and where they're going to go?
They will be.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, because that was important.
They're going to put, they're going to put together a written proposal that is the product of their discussions with the staff members.
Yeah, because I, I want to see a best use for the kid, yeah.
Directly impacted by all of this.
Right, great.
And again, we have time because the contractor has told us, "You've got time." I do want to get the order placed though for the bike racks to make sure that they're, that, you know, I don't think we're dealing with a 12-week lead time on, on bike racks. We're probably dealing with maybe six-week lead time. So we do need to have closure on all of this before school lets out.
So you'll have recommendations to us, David, in the next meeting?
Probably the next committee, the whole meeting.
Okay.
Not at the April meeting. Probably a month away from getting. And we, we do want to let the wellness committee, you know, review the whole package. Have everybody that's been a concerned party to this whole discussion have some time to look at what's being put on the table for the board. In any case, I think the, you know, the 25% increase in bicycle parking slots, I, I, I hope that the board is comfortable with that recommendation. And expanding the replacement of bike racks to Central as well as Hauser, it's a good time to do that. Number three, possible salad bar. We did a survey of school districts. I asked, I asked for an update and, but that's just today. For us to get those remaining four that have not responded. Two of the 20 have salad bars for elementary and junior high. One has for junior high only. One has a setup described as a farmer's market bar. And I've just, I've had multiple conversations with Judy Steinke. She's, you know, she's concerned about, you know, a few things. Wants to make sure that this is something that we, you know, are going to make a commitment to. If, if we do, that it'll be sustainable operationally. First of all, she's, she's given assurance that our current dietary, you know, the standards for meeting dietary needs of students are being met. So this would be an augmenting or an enhancement rather than something that is really essential.
I'm not sure the standards are incredibly rigorous, in my opinion. I think we could do better. I'm not sure the standards are, you know, cream of the crop. I'm just saying, I think we could do a lot better, but. And I don't, my daughter doesn't eat every day, but I think, I'm just throwing that out there. I think we deserve special consideration for health and so.
Well, the last I've heard from Judy is that she would like to pilot a kind of a salad bar using a sneeze guard and a setup that would be not a large investment in equipment or space. Just to see what.
There are practical problems with that when you think about the height of.
Oh, yeah.
I know. I won't be eating a salad.
You know, you're, you're raising the bar in terms of trust when you allow a student to do self-serve. And, and I think that's probably one of the reasons why this is not all that prevalent of an approach. I think it's worth piloting. And, and, but I think we, we better, you know, be, be careful not to have our hopes elevated to the point where this is a, you know, for sure success story. You know, the, one piece of chewing gum in a salad.
We're done.
The whole thing has to be thrown in the garbage immediately, you know.
Do we serve salads now? Do they prepackage them or do we serve salads at all now?
Yes.
So they're prepackaged?
We do, we do serve fruits and vegetables and salad.
Side salad.
Yeah, side salad, so.
I, I'm going to throw out my, my dreamer ideal, which I'm not sure facility-wise we can do, but I have read about schools that do amazing things where children help grow the food. They're part of the process. They wash and prepare the food and it's not a crazy idea. They're doing that now. And I don't think, I don't think our kids are beyond that. I think they can handle it. I think they're responsible from what we've heard. So I just don't want to limit us thinking, oh, someone might, might do something. I think we can expect great things if we do it the right way. So I'm just saying, don't make it impossible, in my opinion. I think we can, if we have good plans and ideas, it can happen. We have a farmer's market right across the street from some of our schools. Can we tap some of those resources? Maybe seasonally, you know, it doesn't have to be every day.
Yeah, I was going to say, the problem is the climate.
Right, well then make it, you know, our farmer's market starts, it's a couple of months out of the school year, but it's a good place to start.
I think leadership is going to be definitely needed and, and I, you know, I don't know how well we're staffed with, you know, saying to Judy, "This is now your, your baby. You've got to run with it."
I get it.
At my former employer, we had transition programs, students transitioning from being 18-years-old to 21-years-old. And their farmer's market was a grand success. And, and the school district invested in a full-blown, basically a little farm on a plot of land.
Yeah, and I'm not talking about high schoolers. I'm actually, when I'm speaking, I'm talking about younger ones. You need to actually start younger if you want them to have an appreciation for what they're eating and where it comes from. I just think we have so many amazing people in the community. Can we, can we use those people and volunteers to do what we want to do, yeah?
Randy is a landscaper.
Randy is a landscaper. He's a gardener. He grows food.
I think that's a great idea. The question I have is, we really don't have much land for that.
I know. That's, that's what I'm saying. This is my dream, my dream, but, not my dream, but I think it's definitely possible.
Those baseball fields behind Hauser?
We have to go.
You don't need outdoor V.
No, we have to go vertical farming.
Yeah, yeah.
No, and I'm not saying we need to grow everything right away. I'm just saying it's not impossible to have children be productive, responsible people.
I hear what you're saying, but I think our landlocked situation really.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. We have the farmer's market. Why can't we use them across the road? I get it, I get it. There's always something, but work, important things take planning and time and it's worth it.
You sound like you're volunteering.
Yes. I get paid so much right now for the board. I got lots of time, so.
Well, Judy is willing to, to, to do. Well, Judy is willing to do what she considers a workable pilot of increasing and creating a kind of a salad bar setting. Her concern, I think, or concerns include student demand. Our students, you know, their appetite is not probably what we would like it to be as far as-
I know, they want pizza and fries.
Yeah, they want fries and pizza and burgers and the stuff that we would prefer that they kind of set aside and be more health-conscious. So I think what I'd like, you know, Judy to do is develop multiple scenario proposals, kind of an entry-level pilot. Then, if, assuming the pilot is successful, what kind of equipment needs would you foresee? We can build those equipment needs into the fiscal '16, '17 budget and say, okay, well, we're going to need this, we're going to need this, we're going to have to run some power, we're going to have to, you know, have all this set up. And then, with the board's blessing of that budget proposal, we would move forward and then monitor the success of making this a new available option for kids. But keeping in mind that, you know, we would only be the third of 20 school districts, you know, that are venturing into this territory. But we could be better than all of them.
You know what? You know, I always expected great things from my students and I wouldn't expect less from us. I just don't want to limit us and I think we have so many. You could make it part of a science class where they grow hydroponic lettuce. It doesn't have to be an entire salad bar. I'm just saying, you can think out of the box in a small way and you can grow it. It doesn't have to be giant farm, you know. Just giving examples.
David, did Judy talk about, I'm sorry, did Judy talk about any additional staff requirements?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah.
You probably have to have somebody there that's-
I would think that that would stretch what she has down there a little bit. I don't know.
Well, and that's, that's my concern. I mean, I've-
Judy is a fabulous person and she's-
I don't want to raise specters of kids not being trustworthy, but, you know, you do need to, you need to watch what they're doing. And be careful that, you know, they're not doing anything that's mischievous when unsupervised.
Isn't most of the staff part-time to begin with?
Yes.
And then the other thing, I recall when we had these discussions that involved the food service staff, wasn't one of their goals try to increase participation in sales? I don't know how that's gone or if this pilot might tie into that. Remember, yeah, I think they're-
To get more kids to participate in the program?
Yeah. So I'm sort of like, has that been successful and would this help it be successful? But I think that there was a thing to increase sale. We increased prices on some items. There was some, we've had a presentation from an outsourced vendor that we didn't go with for one reason or other.
Well, actually, I've asked, you know, this kind of falls into, I've asked Jeff to put that back on the agenda. Jeff wasn't even aware of this vendor that the high school uses. And so we're going to talk about it at the next meeting and that may or may not impact the proposal at hand. So I think that we need to talk about it all and we can reserve the discussion until then.
The way it was structured was that it would actually be-
That's the details that, you know, the problem was is that this vendor that came, and we can get into it at the meeting so that we can have a more hoistered discussion, is that we didn't understand the terms of it. So we just wanted to talk about it as a concept and whether that's something that the board as a whole would be interested in, that being-
The way it was discussed, it was going to be sort of an adjunct to RB. We'd actually be in an intergovernmental agreement with RB, but we wouldn't get the economies of scale. We would have to make it pay on our, kind of on our, so it was, and again, I'm not sure the vendor was the one who should have been presenting an IGA. But the other thing is, even in the short-term basis, maybe there's something they can do for Hollywood, you know, at least not a vendor, but shared services with RB for Hollywood. Because I guess, where do we provide hot lunches or only-
Only in Hauser and Central, so there's three schools not getting any service. That's part of the problem.
Yeah, so anyway, they're like, yeah, different ideas.
So I'll put that on the agenda of the new business for the next meeting and then we can talk about if we want to pursue it further.
All right. Sounds good.
We have joined a food purchasing co-op. The co-op, I can, when you have your discussion of food services, I can forward the materials related to this co-op. You pay, I think it's a $750 membership fee and they're projecting that they should, that we should be able to cut our food expenses by about $15,000. So it's a, and the list of schools that are involved with this co-op is unbelievably positive. And one of my former employers, Jolias Township High School, recently switched from a co-op they had been using to this particular co-op. They do nationwide, something like $300 billion of cooperative purchasing. So their power is immense. And we're, so we're latching on to a great resource for reducing our costs. Because one of the things the board has looked at and was used as justification for raising the lunch price was, you know, being able to produce an income statement that's in the black instead of in the red. So joining that co-op is going to help us be in the black. I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, I guess Judy could present to the board is, you know, what thought and care goes into the planning of all the menus? And, you know, what are some of the pluses and minuses of that whole, all those considerations that they face on a daily basis?
Any other salad bar questions for David? All right, moving right along.
And then, number four, I'd like to forward a recommendation to the board for the April 9th regular meeting, that Mr. Regan be consulted when there is a need to have an administrative approval of an unforeseen construction. This is where a scenario, the general contractor is telling us that unless we give them direction in the immediate future, they're going to have to hold off on progress that could impact negatively the end result of the project. So it's kind of an unforeseen construction condition situation. I've talked with Griff about this. I know that, you know, Mr. Pat has had many, many years of experience with this type of thing. And so I think what's being presented as a recommendation is fairly customary and it would not include anything that's an enhancement to the project that would, you know, logically require the board's support. It's more of a necessity to react to a situation that threatens the project staying on schedule. And we just recently encountered that with changing the electrical requirements for the elevator.
I like this proposal and I like bringing Rich in as the financing facilities chair as getting his approval. I think that's a great idea. That way the board is informed. The only question I have is on the $15,000. It would seem like, that seems like a sort of an arbitrary number in some ways. Is it, would it make more sense to, in general, have like a percentage of the project? I mean, more expensive projects, you'd think are going to require more and less expensive less. I mean, I don't know, maybe that's enough, I don't know, I just don't know where these numbers came from and if it's desirable to have a percentage number instead.
I had the same question.
How did you select that number, David?
I lived for 11 years with a $20,000 understanding and it was workable. A percentage of the project, I'd be comfortable with that. Maybe you and I could talk about it and come up with a number that you think makes sense. The, you know, hopefully you're not seeing a whole lot of unforeseen construction change orders, so you're not invoking this all that often. I just spent 11 years where that was the standard, $20,000. And I thought this is a smaller operation generally, not so big a magnitude, so 15 ought to do it.
If the project is sufficiently researched and prepared for, you really shouldn't have money. It should be in a rare and unforeseen circumstance.
It's a good benchmark of whether or not you're dealing with the right architect. Because if there's a lot of change orders, then that's a bad sign.
I did have a couple of questions, if I could, about the elevator project in particular. One is, we asked for some diagrams for the plan and he gave us, the architect gave us some little top-down views of where it's going to go. But I haven't seen any like, what it's going to look like, you're standing in the hallway looking at the elevator, how deeply is it going to be recessed, how, what's the, like, how is it going to blend in with what's around it, you know, that kind of thing. Does he have any plans like that, where he shows like, what's it going to look like if you're standing there in front of the elevator? I mean, is it, is it, what's the color of the elevator, all those fine points, if you're, you know, what's basically what's the whole thing going to look like when all is said and done?
Well, the elevator has already been ordered.
Okay.
So I could-
Well, that's the cab. I think Jeff is referring to the elevation of the finishes and how he's going to blend the exterior with what's existing.
With what we have there, we got brick in the hallway and all that, how is that going to all meld together, you know, from the aesthetic point of view? So does he have plans like that that we could look at or is he, I'm sure he's got something. I mean, must have.
He gave us some PDFs of overviews, I think there were two of them, and I don't remember seeing elevations in there.
Well, the, basically what he's provided is floor plans. And I can get back to you regarding what the finishes on the doors, you know, because, I mean, basically, the elevator is going to occupy space inside of rooms. And the exterior wall to the cavity in which the elevator is located will just be made to be as identical as possible to the interior walls.
Right, I'm more interested in looking at the elevator from the outside. So if you're standing in the hallway and you're looking at the elevator, you know, what's it, how are they going to make it all look like it's naturally there as opposed to they just slapped it in there and it's sort of-
The framing?
Yeah, the framing and stuff like that.
Yeah. Okay, well, I think the goal, but I'll verify this with Paul Pacetti, is to frame it out so that it's going to blend with the hallway as aesthetically, you know, non-obtrusive as possible. But I'll talk to him about it and ask him-
Too big, bright yellow popper.
Yeah.
Could we ask that?
Made by students.
That's kind of cute, actually.
Actually, the elevator is pink, but David didn't know what I was talking about.
Yeah, right. It was my favorite color.
I think he should just post his full set of drawings so we can just put it in board book and then anybody can look at it.
That sounds good.
You know, I know I've had requests from other community members to see what it's going to look like, so I'd like to just be able to just direct them to that resource.
I'm sure April would like to see it too.
Some other questions about the elevator project were soundproofing. Is that, I mean, is there an issue with the sound of the elevator going up and down for the kids that are in the room that's going to be, where they're taking a corner of the classroom out for the elevator? Are they going to hear it going up and down or does it need soundproofing or anything like that?
I had asked that when they first talked to him and he said that they would look at it, but I hadn't heard what he found.
So he wouldn't want that, you know, so you're sitting in the glass, whoosh, whoosh.
Oh, I've worked next to an elevator and it's loud. It's not, it's not minimal, yeah.
So basically shaft, I'll ask him about soundproofing of the shaft.
And then my final question is, I get nervous about projects that are custom in a way, like this, like the painting project seems like it's kind of generic. I mean, it's just like generic pavement project. This is, they're putting an elevator in a building that wasn't designed for that. I mean, they're kind of coming in retroactively. And in my experience, just working on my house, it's like, there are always stuff that happens that this never goes as smoothly as you hope. And given that this is already going to extend into the school year, I just am very concerned that we make sure that it goes as smoothly as possible so that we're not like sitting around here in October and it's a big hole in the wall and, you know.
Prepare for that, because then everything will be better.
It's like, how do we kind of, how do we make sure it's on track?
The contractor's drawn up a schedule that has this finished by August 19th.
Okay, well, that'd be great.
That's a good sign already. And as a matter of fact, today, Paul Pacetti said that he can't remember the last time that he had fully approved shop drawings by this time. So right now, all shop drawings and submittals have been forwarded to the architect and turned around. So this project has already moved along very well. But I, you know, the fact that he's willing to put in writing that he's shooting for an August 19 completion date is very positive, right there.
I think it would be good if we saw project timelines, right? And I know Paul prepared it, but maybe we see a monthly update.
Yeah, that would be, no, we haven't seen it.
It's a good idea, that way we could see if things are on track, basically.
We can see if he's hitting his milestones for each phase of the project, for demolition, for prep, for fit-out, all that.
And we'll also work on contingency instructional plans just to test there. And because we'll do that, it'll be done, because that'll take a lot of work on it.
David, I've never been involved in a project where the board is reviewing every single benchmark completion date, but this is a new experience for me. He gave, today he gave us a list, which I could share with the board, of like 20 items, start dates and stop dates on each one of the items. We discussed when he was going to start the concrete, when he was going to complete the concrete, when we're going to put up visqueen barriers to various parts of the hallway, when those barriers can come down, when his electrician is going to be starting, you know. So all those things are a level of minutia that is definitely taking place and will be covered in every weekly meeting that is being, that is taking place. Every weekly meeting, and board members are welcome to sit in on any weekly meeting. We can let you know when those weekly meetings are going to take place. I won't be here for every one of them, but I will be probably tapping in by telephone to just about every meeting.
That's good to know. And we know that your schedule is going to have you away from the district for a good part of this, but you'll still keep your eye on it. We just know that there's going to be transition happening here and we, you know, we want to be involved as much as is helpful.
I can put a hard hat on.
The early indicators-
I thought you already had one there.
With a paw print.
No, I have negative.
Okay, I'll put that down as another item, the Gantt chart activities list with start and stop dates. I'll share that with the board.
Thank you very much.
I just have a minor question. Mr. Pacetti had originally told us we might be able to take out the chair lifts in the hallways with the addition of the elevator, but do we still think that's a good idea? Are they, do we, should we keep them? Obviously, they have to stay during construction. I remember him talking about that because of the narrowing stairwells. Is there any talk of what will happen? I don't remember if I asked April that.
That's a good question, Sharon.
Because he had talked about that as a bonus of why it's a good thing to do it, because it'll save space and get people moving faster.
There are places you have to leave them because the elevator won't-
Chair, yeah, the mezzanine will remain unavailable except by-
No, obviously during construction, I mean, after it's finished, are we going to keep the device?
I think it was depending on where the elevator was going to be located.
Depending on where it is, okay.
You have some chair lifts that probably could disappear, but other places they have to stay.
Yeah, the mezzanine has to stay. You can't take the elevator to it. No, not there, but he had mentioned a few of them, we could-
Mr. Brockway asked for clarification of this, for us to provide a count. There are 30 classrooms that will be accessible and benefited by the elevator. There will be five classrooms that will not. And those classrooms are located on the mezzanine level.
Right, obviously, yeah. No, I just remember him saying that, I was curious.
Those motorized lifts for the mezzanine level will be the only lifts that will remain. Any lifts anywhere else will not be needed.
Is the removal part of the scope of work? The removal of those chairs that are no longer needed?
I'll have to check.
It might be, is it a change order? Uh-oh.
We have a maintenance company that deals with those lifts, so if it isn't in the project, we would just have that company come by and pull them out.
Okay, great. Any other questions for David? I think there was a late agenda I had added to this.
Well, part of David's project that he just gave you, he asked me to run potential financial implication for the K5 math adoption, should it come to a recommendation at the April board meeting. We will be recommending one way or the other, whether we have a recommendation for the adoption or whether we have a recommendation to continue searching for the right program. It'll be one way or the other. So I ran the numbers for the potential adoption so that you would see them because part of the opportunity is to get the teachers trained in June, should we adopt. We had 30, I think I said, 38 out of the, like, 50 teachers that need to be trained available in June to do the training and the vendor available should we proceed, which would mean we'd want to order the materials for them to have and to hold and to get to know in June. So we could expend it out of this year's budget, given the surplus that he projected on what his original expenditure report was indicating. So I ran what the fiscal year implications would be for 2016, should we make the recommendation to- to adopt at the April board meeting and be able to expend that before fiscal year 16 is over. So that's what you have in front of you. You see the, the green number there, that's the pilot materials that we received at no charge, and then you see the rest of the materials cost, the PD for the June date requires two trainers because of the number of people we're training, and then the PD that would be embedded into fiscal year 17. I put a note at the bottom, you'll get a more detailed explanation should we recommend the adoption, but it's two and a half days per grade level spread out over the course of the school year. And that's required in order to adopt this program. So those are the numbers and what they're looking like, and Mr. Sellers feels comfortable that we could push that through this year, should we move forward with a recommendation.
One, one real bright spot in our current fiscal year results is property tax refunds. You know, our exposure on refunds is, is, is large, but what's been accumulating here to date, you know, we're probably looking at, at, you know, whereas last year was $750,000 across all funds, we're probably talking about less than, less than $500,000 for all funds combined by the time we're done with it. That's all, you know, fingers and toes crossed, but at this point in time, the budget is developing favorably, and I, in talking over this with Merrill, it seems like there's a timing issue as far as getting the implementation started. And the auditor is gonna come along, and, we can't charge something to the subsequent fiscal year anyway. The auditor will say, well, if you expended the money, it's gonna be charged to the current fiscal year, so we wouldn't wanna, you know, we would have to delay it after July 1 for implementation. It seems like getting it done earlier than July 1 is desirable.
So you feel like we have a strong enough sense of what those potential property tax refunds are gonna be like to make a commitment for that money by April 19?
Well, it's not, it's not only that-
Well, you, I will be making a commitment then, you'll be getting the recommendation, and then you would, it would go on the consent agenda for May.
For the May meeting.
Yeah, but with the authorization to maybe execute the POs once the money comes in. So Griff was hoping to, to propose it that way, should the recommendation come forward.
So the recommendation is to pay for this with property tax? Is that what it is?
No, 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 all I'm saying is-
But you'll have more time to know.
You've, you've got a few categories, I was just saying, I'd like to underscore that that's one thing that's coming in favorably. Another thing that's coming in favorably is, is benefits as compared to the budget. You know, you, there's two reasons why you can be favorable in terms of a budget variance. Number one, costs have really dropped, and you've gotten a better economic climate for the, the particular cost category. Another cause could be that the, that the person who developed the budget did a bad job and, and overestimated the expenditures unrealistically. So I think we had a little bit of a high estimate on, on benefits, which, which is good, we need to be cautious when I, when I do a budget development process. But benefits is looking good, and just some other miscellaneous categories, when you combine everything, we're, we're $438,000 more favorable with all these categories combined, and, you're talking about a $180,000 commitment that is relatively time-sensitive. So I think it's advisable to move ahead.
So you'll get the full-blown presentation once the committee makes its final recommendation.
Very good. Any other questions?
Great. So we have future meeting dates on April 19th, a regular business meeting at 6:30 with the closed session, the open session will be at 7:00 PM, that's at Hauser. Next meeting will be a special meeting of the board, April 26th, that will be with our new superintendent-elect for the training. May 3rd is committee of the whole at 7:00 PM here at Hauser, and then May 17th will be a regular business meeting that will be in the multipurpose room of Ames. So is there any other business? If there's no other business, then the meeting is adjourned.